Hello, everybody. Welcome to the floor of Town Hall and this is the first school committee meeting of the school year, so I extend a welcome to everybody in the room, anybody who happens to have nothing better to do on a Thursday than watch us on television, but mostly I want to extend my deepest and warmest and most excited welcome to all of our staff across the district, to all of our families, and of course, and most of all, to all of our students. So, welcome. We're going to start with administrative business and the calendar, which is up on the screens, and we've already gotten going with, I think, most of our subcommittees have already met this year, capital subcommittee met, curriculum met this morning, no?
Next week.
Next week. Anyway, many of our finances met, and then there are obviously curriculum, finance, policy, all meeting in the next couple of weeks, and the, there's a meeting, in terms of the building committees, on the 29th of this month will be the first meeting of the fall of the high school expansion, building committee, and there isn't a schedule published yet for the reconvening of the ninth school building committee. Any other highlights on the schedule that anybody wants to mention? All right. On the consent agenda, we have the minutes, the past record from the summer workshop of July 10th. I assume everybody's had a chance to review those, and I would entertain a motion on the minutes. Yes, thank you. Ms. Schreiner-Aldem, second.
Second.
Okay, any comments, discussion, edits, anything to add? Okay, all in favor of approval of those minutes? Thank you very much.
And one abstention.
And one abstention from Ms. Scott. We have student trip application, and I guess that's, anything, is there anything to be said about that, or is, just stores Connecticut?
No, it's just part of the annual UN, it's before the school committee because it's out of state and overnight. The high school team has the appropriate staffing, plan for, you know, the student-to-adult ratio, et cetera.
Yes.
I hate to be a stickler, but did we get the information on it? We did. Okay. All right.
All right. So, a motion from Ms. Charlofsky, is there a second? Ms. Schreiner-Aldem, all in favor of approval of this?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sorry.
So, not that we have to dig into this now, but as we're about to vote on a field trip, I would like to get an update either in finance subcommittee or in a future school committee meeting on, now that we are, now that we have a financial assistance policy, but we're still in process to get a field trip policy, how we are treating financial assistance for field trips in the interim would be a helpful thing to know.
Why don't we bring that question to the finance subcommittee first, and then back to the full committee?
Thank you.
And if we have time, when we get to subcommittee reports later tonight, we could discuss it further, if possibly. Okay, so again, a consent agenda is actually supposed to all be voted at once, but seeing as I did, I broke it up inadvertently, so let's vote on this student trip application. All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, now we have public comment. Ms. Coyne, do you want to see who's on the list over there? Thank you. And I will just announce again, because it's the beginning of the year, that public comment is an opportunity for the public to speak to us, and our role is really to listen, and we don't typically engage in dialogue in public comment, but we listen very carefully and take note. No one has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience, in the present who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to introduction of new staff, superintendent thought.
All right, so as the committee can see, we have been very busy from a human resources perspective this summer, and have just an exceptional group of new members to the Public Schools of Brookline team. I want to take a few minutes to introduce everyone, and certainly will pause if anyone on the committee has questions for newest members of our team. I'm going to start our new steps to success coordinator. As you know, we've worked for many months as a committee and as a district with respect to steps to success, and I am thrilled to announce that Jeanette Lindor, who is not new to the district, Jeanette Lindor as our new steps to success coordinator. She comes to this role with experience in various leadership positions within Brookline, most recently working as a guidance counselor at Brookline High, a position she's held since 2005. Ms. Lindor has also served as the steps to success work connections for youth internship coordinator, the diversity chair for the Brookline Educators Union Executive Board, as a board member at the Brookline Teen Center, and the today's students, tomorrow's teacher liaison. Prior to joining Brookline, Ms. Lindor served as the assistant director of the MIT Wellesley Upward Bound Program in Cambridge, and she recently completed seed facilitator training in order to begin co-facilitating workshops for BHSF in the fall. Ms. Lindor has a parent's open house tonight, so I'm introducing her first to the committee. Certainly, open up any questions, and then I know you will be leaving.
All right, hello, everybody. I am thrilled to be here. I feel like I've grown up in Brookline, and my daughter has grown up in Brookline. She's a junior at the high school and a Pierce School graduate since kindergarten, and I'm, ever since I started at Brookline, steps to success has been near and dear to my heart. So I'm thrilled to be in what has been my dream job. So I'm thrilled to be starting my dream job with steps to success. I'm excited for work that is to be done to support step to success families in the district. I see the staff as being a bridge between home and school, and looking forward to help them do that. We have great paraprofessionals, seven paraprofessionals who are spread across the district, and I'm looking forward to working with them and families and collaborating with the schools.
Yes, Ms. Charlofsky.
So I think if somebody takes the time to come and be here, we should take the time at least to ask a question of you, and I'm thrilled that you have this job. I'm thrilled that you know Brookline and you know many of the families probably that are parts of steps. I'm wondering what you think your biggest challenge will be in steps?
I think-
Or a challenge, it doesn't have to be the biggest.
I think helping the families feel more accepted in the school system or in the schools, so being more involved, so I think family engagement from fourth grade through senior year, of just making them feel welcome in all of our buildings.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, it is my pleasure to introduce, and many of you have met Lisa Richardson, our new director of human resources. Lisa joins Brookline as our new director of human resources. Originally from Ohio, Ms. Richardson has spent the last 15 years of her professional life guiding and implementing key initiatives that improve business performance. Most recently, Ms. Richardson was the chief human resources officer at Mount Ida College. She also has deep experience at a similarly sized district, Middletown, Middleton?
Middleton.
I flip between Middleton and Middletown, sort of product of growing up in Philly and living here now. Middletown, Ohio, where she served as director of human resources for many years. It is a thrill to have Ms. Richardson on the team. Been a couple of weeks now, and it feels like it's been, it feels like she's always been a part of the team, so I ask everyone to join me in welcoming Ms. Richardson.
So I will echo what Andrew said, it feels like I've always been part of the team. It is a real pleasure to be here and to be serving Brookline. In my 12 days, no, I'm sorry, my 17 days now, 17 days.
But who's coming?
So in my time here, I have come to appreciate all of the hard work that it takes to make a district like Brookline run, and you know, what I have found is the dedication and the knowledge of the staff and the administration is superb, and it is a real pleasure to work and serve here every day. So I'm looking forward to the rest of my tenure in Brookline. One question, please?
I've got one, okay. All right, this is a really important question. Are you a Buckeye fan?
I, you have to be a Buckeye fan.
That's what I was afraid of. Okay. Don't talk anymore.
Next, it's my pleasure to welcome Meg Mancini as our new senior director of programs in the office of teaching and learning. Over the last 10 years, Ms. Mancini has led consulting practice, sorry, Mancini's, I'm sorry, my apologies, a consulting practice focused on improving educational outcomes for vulnerable populations of students through strengthening programs, curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional development for teachers. Ms. Mancini is currently a doctoral candidate in education anthropology, and what I didn't include in the official write-up is that she served for many years as the principal of Boston Evening Academy and led the work, the challenging work to expand that to become Boston Day and Evening Academy, serving some of the most vulnerable students in the city of Boston. So it's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Mancini to Brookline, and it's been five days, I believe, four days, four days, so.
Thanks. I'm also thrilled to be here. It's been a long time since I've worked in a school district, and I wanted to come back and work as part of a cohesive team, and everyone here has just been so supportive and welcoming, and one of my priorities has been to get out to schools and to actually meet people that are impacted by what this office does, by providing enrichment, funding, and programming, and it's just been an honor to be here, and I look forward to, you know, being here a long time, I hope, and to helping Brookline grow its programs and services to students and being part of the team, so. And I'm not a Buckeye fan, but I do appreciate, as an anthropologist, I totally respect people's, their likes and wants and desires, so.
Come on, somebody. I can't do this all the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. So as the resident, I guess, anthropological linguist, I will say welcome on that front. Just curious, as you think about the diversity that we have here in Brookline, we have many different kinds of diversity, for sure, racial, socioeconomic, learners, I'm just curious how you think about working with a population that has so many different categories of students, all in sometimes a classroom of 24.
Are you asking me as a perspective of a senior program director or an educator? I mean, I think that it's really important, as an ethnographer and anthropologist, to get voice and to hear people's voices and to hear people's perspectives. So I think what's really important is providing access and opportunity for dialogue, true dialogue, and welcoming, and I think that's one of the priorities of the district, to really bring everyone together, to have dialogue and conversations. So I think that in order to serve people, we need to know what their opinions and thoughts and desires are, and so getting them to the table to communicate in some way about what that is, including children. Children know a lot more, I think, than we give them credit for. Thank you for such a great question.
Thank you.
Go lingual anthropologists.
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce somebody that the committee got to know well last year, and that is Leslie Ryan Miller, who is serving as our interim principal for Pierce School. Ms. Miller is the interim principal of the Pierce School for the 2017-2018 school year. Ms. Ryan Miller was Brookline's senior director of teaching and learning last year, and has over 20 years of experience in education. Prior to joining the Public Schools of Brookline, Ms. Ryan Miller served as a kindergarten and first, kindergarten, first and second grade teacher, and following her 11 years as an early educated education teacher, she served as a new teacher mentor, director of teacher development and advancement, and director of school supports for the Boston Public Schools. I will add that I have not seen anyone smile more in these opening days of school than Ms. Ryan Miller, and I will add as an editorial comment that I, it is clear that she is thrilled to be a part of the Pierce community. So, welcome to a new position to Ms. Ryan Miller.
Just give you a little update, the first cool days, the opening of Pierce has been extremely successful. It's been wonderful to meet Pierce families, start to get to know the students, as well as the staff. We had an incredible first three days of professional development, where we looked at data, we looked at enrollment trends for the school and what that means for us in terms of how we work on a day-to-day basis, and some of the positives of that, one of them being, now that we are in four different buildings, I think that there is a real benefit to our students who will at some point, most of them move on to the high school. I can't think of a better way to prepare them to move into a large school in that they get to learn at Pierce and move to the different parts of the campus under the guided eye of their teachers, so then we know which students may need additional support as we prepare them to move forward. So we've had an incredible couple of first days and looking forward to a great year. So thank you.
Because I know you're very new to the position, but I'm curious if shifting from a central office position to a position in the school building, if there's anything, any new insights you've gained about what it takes to deliver great education here in Brookline?
So I think it's been a tremendous benefit to have had the opportunity to have worked in all of the K-8 schools, to see some of the best practices, some things that need improvement, and then implement some of those best practices at Pierce. I mean, we've done a lot of talking about that, and I've shared with the Pierce community much of what I've learned in my time as senior director of teaching and learning. A big part of that is also the curriculum initiatives. I, it's been a really eye-opening experience to try to implement those initiatives that were rolled out here, and to see what they look like in practice every day for teachers and for students. So looking forward to more growth, but definitely learning a lot already, so. Yes.
No, this is actually a thank you for stepping into a, obviously a late vacancy. It's, I'm sure it's very challenging, but also at the same time, I am sure with your experience in Brookline, and also your extensive teaching experience in the past, you will bring a steady hand to the community, and obviously making sure that this year is a-
Yeah, just, there was lightning.
Yeah.
Does that mean?
Yeah.
Over there, it's not raining.
And we'll use that as best of luck. Thank you very much.
Very much. And I just have to say-
Confirmation.
I have to say, I couldn't have asked for a warmer welcome from both the staff and from the families. They've been incredibly good to me. Central office has been very good to me, and it was an incredible opportunity to have three weeks with the outgoing principal, just she and I in the building, so I can't think of a better way to transition into a new school. Yes, Barbara?
I'm thinking about the building. It, as you walk through Pierce, it's one of the very, one of the most exciting teaching environments. There's things going on, you see this all over the place, and yet, it strikes me as one of the hardest places to teach, because there is so much going on, and there's, in that central building, shows what I'm talking about, and I just wondered how you felt about that environment, and if you have any ideas about changes you might make, make it more effective, maybe a little earlier to ask that. I'm curious.
So I think once you come to the building and you see it in action, it's really incredible, but it works. And so you can go to, you know, there are many different levels, and there's a very, very top level, that if you go to the top, you can see the entire unit. It's really amazing to see, you know, over 400 children engaged, they're learning, they're working, and it's quiet, so it's, you know, I haven't seen any negatives to that yet. There's just something about it that really works, and the teachers who have been there for some time are used to it, our students are used to it, so that's, it's, you know, no issues so far. I think the biggest thing is that due to the growth of enrollment, we've been talking a lot about traffic patterns in the school. So I've been looking very carefully, when Andrew came, he spent a lot of time with me at recess and lunch. So how do we move children in a way that is safe, where we're not taking time away from learning, so we can move fairly swiftly through our transitions, and my next project is to look at dismissal. So we've already made a couple of adjustments, where in the past, when the 2:30 bell rang, kids got up and they were out. So now we've turned the bell off, we're doing a staggered dismissal, you know, just to kind of settle things down just a little. I'm not saying they were unsettled, but to just slow things down a little bit. So just looking at those types of transitions at this point.
So of course, opening, asking Leslie to serve as the interim principal at Pierce opened a big, created a big opening in the central office team and the office of teaching and learning, and I'm thrilled to announce to the school committee that we were able to find Nadine Ekstrom to serve as our new senior director for teaching and learning. Ms. Ekstrom comes to Brookline after having been the superintendent of the Berlin-Boylston Public Schools for the past seven years. She's currently working towards a doctorate of education and school leadership and a doctorate of philosophy and educational research and evaluation, so very ambitious plans. She does international travel and has visited Poland, Finland, Germany, and Germany to study their educational systems. And I will add that in the first couple of days of school, as I was traveling around to schools, Ms. Ekstrom and I, our paths crossed repeatedly. Admittedly, I was driving from school to school, and Ms. Ekstrom, to learn the town, was walking and taking the tea between all of our schools, and I think on that, on one day, our paths crossed on four separate occasions, as part of her entry, getting to know our schools and our town. So it's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Ekstrom.
Hello, thank you. It has been a wonderful transition to come here to Brookline. I have thoroughly enjoyed visiting the schools, walking around the communities to understand even more about the community, and that's why I did do the walking route. I was asked a couple of times, you sure you don't want to ride? I'm like, nope, I'm good, I'm walking. I just want to see the community and get to have a better feel for the community, and I've learned very quickly that I have very big shoes to fill. Leslie's done such a great job in putting this position in place for last year, and I'm able to just walk in there, I think, very smoothly. Have been able to meet with the coordinators already, and just to hear about their different content areas, some of their challenges, some of their excitement with what they've been able to put into place, and I'm looking forward to just being able to move that forward even more, so. My thank you.
You know, one of the things that we've been grappling with as the district has gotten bigger is thinking about sort of the role of centralization and the role of autonomy, sort of how do we think about equity across all of our buildings, but then how do we actually give enough autonomy to the principals to be able to run their buildings in their way and to classrooms, to teachers as well? And so my question for you is just, what kinds of questions do you ask, or how do you think about that question? Because we do have a wide variety of sizes of buildings, a wide variety of needs, and also a very strong belief in system-wide equity, that a second grader is getting a consistent education district-wide.
I've found myself already having some of those conversations. Equity is very important for me as well. The districts that I came from, and I say districts because I was a superintendent of three separate districts, and all three separate districts were doing their own thing, but yet they were all feeding into the same common middle school, right, just like we're all feeding into the same common high school. And how do we have that same amount of experience regardless of which school they attend? So those will be definitely some serious conversations during my time, and just a little correction, I actually have been, I was in my seventh year superintendent, but I was at Berlin-Boylston for five of those seven years. So within that timeframe, we were able to really work well with the teachers, and not that there wasn't pushback or discussion otherwise, because this is what we did, and it's not that it's, we don't want them to do what they've done, but we want to look at the efficiencies and the continuity across all. So that's very important to me as well, and I'm glad to see that Brookline is valuing that and is looking into that, because I have some strategies that I've been able to use that were successful, that I can assist with, so.
Great.
So going from being a superintendent to the job that you have, what are the issues that you see with that, or are there any? Because it's, there are two different types of-
So politically correct or personally correct, I will say I feel I have, I have my family back, I guess, is one of the things to say. I was working with three, I had four school committees and three teachers' unions and three budgets. And two teachers' unions were MTA and one was AFT, so and the two MTAs had two different representatives, so it was constantly a juggle and pulling out and saying, what's this contract and what's that contract? Here, you're one unified group with the same common language, and so if not anything, it feels efficient for me, and I feel I finally have the ability to be able to do something at 150% the way I like to do things, and I think it's going to be a great partnership and a great team, and I'm looking forward to meeting and having time to have discussions with all of you as well. I really, I loved my school committees, both school committees. I actually became friends with a lot of them, because they really took to heart the value and the importance of education, and that is really, when I speak of education, I think people will see, I have this passion, desire, and excitement when I hear of great things happening, and I like to share that, so.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to introduce someone that the school committee knows well, and that is Dr. Keith Lozama, who is now serving as our interim director of Brookline's Metco program for the 2017-2018 school year. Dr. Lozama has worked for the Public Schools of Brookline since 2006, and most recently served as the coordinator of Metco at Brookline High School, a position he held since 2008. Dr. Lozama is a graduate of Brookline High School and of the Metco program himself. His two children currently attend the Driscoll School, and he met his wife at a Brookline track meet in the sixth grade.
Aww.
So, welcome to Dr. Lozama into this new position, and- I will add that the transition has been seamless, and some really great things happening for our Metco families.
Thank you, thank you. And my wife asked me for my number and an exer for her, if she's watching. So I'll be brief. This is a special place. It's always been a special place for me. So to be back here and working in this position kind of brings it full circle. My fifth grade teacher's sitting right over there. So it's just, it's just, you know, and when I mean special, it's great, it's a, this is a place I consider a home. It's a place where I'm so happy my kids are a part of, and we just have to continue this work, and it's very important that we do that. It's very important that we do that. So that's my brief statement. Questions? Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Dr. Lozama. It's so exciting to call you Dr. Lozama, because we met such a long time ago. I didn't meet you as a fifth grader, but a decade, almost a decade ago, and just, you're such an exemplar of someone who's grown up in the system and has gotten benefited from great mentorship from many, many administrators and people, and it's just fantastic that you're now in a role that can mentor other people, and it's wonderful to hire from the outside, we're so glad you're all here, but it's also just incredible that this is a place where people want to build their careers and assume greater leadership and responsibility. So just a, not a question, just a thank you for mentoring the students, mentoring other teachers and staff, and just being somebody who can sort of help lead all of us through the work that you're doing, so thank you.
And I want to give a shout-out to you, because, you know, it's that leadership that matters. So I thank you for that, for providing us that opportunity. Thank you. Yes, my fifth grade teacher. Don't tell folks how many times you sent me. Don't tell folks how many times you sent me. She went to Lawrence. It was a townwide sixth grade track meet. So my daughter was at her sixth grade track meet. I told her she's not going to find her husband. We're going to have problems if you try to find your husband.
Well, I do have to say something. I was, Keith's a great teacher. And he was always enthusiastic and hardworking. Never a kid you had to sort of calm down a little bit. He was willing to do what needed to be done. And I am just delighted to see him in this position. He was, he was a star in fifth grade and he continues to be.
Thank you, guys.
So continuing with folks from within the public schools of Brookline taking on new positions, it's my pleasure to welcome Suzanne Viness as Brookline High School's Special Education Coordinator. Suzanne is the new Special Education Coordinator at BHS. She comes to BHS from Lower Devotion, where she had been the team facilitator for the past year. Ms. Viness recently completed a doctorate in special education from Boston University with a specialization in school climate and inclusive practices for students with severe behavioral disorders. In her spare time, she enjoys teaching at Boston University and participating in research projects focused on student mental health and emotional and behavioral disorders. So please welcome me, join me in welcoming Suzanne.
Hello. I didn't prepare anything. I am delighted to be here in Brookline. It's such a wonderful place. And to move to the high school and be welcomed by such wonderful people there has really been delightful. So I am really looking forward to being there and doing some really great and hard work at BHS.
As you shift from one of the elementary schools to the high school, what do you see as being the new or different opportunities and challenges in working with an older age group?
I have to say, I was in a meeting today with a family and one of the best experiences I've had yet as a special educator is listening to this student himself reflect on his own learning and his own needs and who he is and where he wants to go. And that was new for me. My experience has been with preschool through eighth grade. So I just found that to be incredible. And I really look forward to more of those opportunities to hear from the students themselves. And I think one of the big challenges is figuring out how to make special education appealing to students who are in grade nine through 12, when they resist wanting to do that and being different. So we have some work to do there.
It's also my pleasure to welcome Tanya Alvarado as our new K8 Curriculum Coordinator of World Language. Ms. Alvarado is new to the K8 World Language Curriculum Coordinator position in the Office of Teaching and Learning. She's spent the last 12 years as a Spanish teacher in the public schools of Brookline, at Brookline High School, Lincoln School, and most recently Baker School. Ms. Alvarado is currently a member of the PSB Middle School Curriculum Team and formerly served on the K5 Curriculum Summer Team, the Heritage Speaker Support Team, and is a professional development facilitator. So please welcome, join me in welcoming Ms. Alvarado as our new K8 Curriculum Coordinator.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the introduction. It is so exciting to be here. I'm really here because of the phenomenal teachers who I've had in my lifetime and the experiences that I had in their classrooms. Their role in my life was just incredible. And it was because of them that I wanted to be an educator. And I really felt strongly that that was what I had to do. It was my social responsibility to do so and to provide opportunities for students as they were given to me. So I am just speechless, really. I'm quite speechless. I'm, you know, I'm passionate about languages, which is why I'm in this role. I see the opportunity for language study to really help students become aware of their global citizenship, helping them to connect with other people while gaining real world readiness skills that are essential, while also gaining an understanding of and an appreciation of other cultures, which is more important today than ever before, I think. So I am so looking forward to collaborating with my administrative colleagues, returning and new, and finding ways that I can do the best I can in my role to support my teachers so that they can do their best work in creating engaging learning opportunities for all of our students.
So I loved your list of areas of relevance and the passion behind it as well, but the importance of world language today for our students, culture, connection, literacy, global citizenship, all of that. And something I'm curious about is, are you hearing from the teachers? Or do you have ideas about, or is there something happening already? What's happening already in the district? Or what might happen in the district? Where world languages are being, as opposed to, the silos are being broken down and between curriculum subjects? Project-based learning or, you know, language in the context of social studies? Or with literature, you know, English, or language arts, you know? Or, you know, sort of, is it, just, it's sort of a longer conversation, but if you had, if there's anything going on there that you want to tell us about?
You know, I, I've thought, I've been offered already, I mean, my administrative colleagues, the other coordinators have been so incredibly welcoming and warm and have already expressed interest in building those sort of cross-curricular connections which are of benefit in all of the content areas. So I've already worked with enrichment and challenge support to help support our heritage speakers. Jeff Tegnell, our social studies coordinator, has, you know, we've connected, that we want to continue conversations, particularly around some of the units that he has in social studies and in different grade levels. So the beauty is that there are so many opportunities for that. And I'm really looking forward to having those conversations and finding out what we can do.
Few more introductions. It is my pleasure to welcome Gus Travassos, who's joining Brookline as the Food Services Director for Whitson's Culinary Group. Gus previously served as the Food Service Director for Haverhill Public Schools, also under Whitson's. And prior to that was the Director of Culinary Nutrition Services at the Hebrew Rehab Center in Boston. Mr. Travassos has over 15 years' experience in the food services field. And he is also bilingual fluent in both English and Portuguese. So please join me in welcoming Mr. Travassos.
Thank you, everyone, for having me here in Whitson's and welcoming us to the Brookline community. We appreciate that. We look forward to serving everyone. It's a very diverse community. And certainly, it's going to be a challenge to try to meet the needs of everyone. As you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback based on the menus. A lot of it's been very positive. And obviously, there's room for improvement based on the comments that we receive from parents. So I'm out and about and meeting with some parents. I'm meeting with some parents tomorrow at Pierce. So we'll take all that feedback in consideration and what have you. Obviously, our program now is an open book. I don't know if you've had a chance to go on the website. So if you go on the menu page and you click on the menu, I've got a lot of positive feedback from parents, staff, and especially the nursing staff. You know, by clicking a few buttons, you can see all the nutritional information that is on the menu. All the allergies are listed, allergens for everything that's on the menu. All the ingredients are listed right there. So parents, obviously, very mindful of nutrition nowadays. So they look at that information. And everyone has their learned opinion about what is good and what could be better, so on and so forth. So we will try to work with everyone and try to meet everyone's needs. I would just like to say, hopefully, I think you all know this, you have a lot of hard-working, dedicated employees in the Food Service Department across the district. I'm amazed by the level of dedication, the experience, and the commitment that they have to the community and to the students that they serve every day. So I think you know that, but I would just want to reinforce that and just say, you have a really dynamite team out there. And they really, they're really passionate about what they do and they really want the right things for the children of Brookline and the staff and faculty that they serve. So I just wanted to let you know that. And actually, you know, Portuguese actually came in handy today. I had a Brazilian parent that came in. So I'm a little rusty with my Portuguese. So I was actually able to help her out. An issue that she had with the account. So I guess every once in a while, being bilingual will help me out here. So once again, thank you for having me here. And I'm looking forward to serving the community, so.
First of all, I want to thank you for being so open to the feedback and already collaborating with so many parents, other administrators, et cetera, in responding to it. So, and so thank you for that responsiveness. And, you know, I hope it will continue. Really appreciate it. And also appreciate the increased transparency as well. But I'm curious, you mentioned that parents or people have different perspectives on nutrition. And so I'm wondering, you know, how you think about, or what information or guidelines you use to think about sort of setting nutritional standards for the meals you provide?
Well, first of all, you know, I don't set the standards. They're not my standards. They're not Whitson's standards, for a sec. I mean, it's actually federal law. We follow the HICFA, the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act. So it basically lays out what a reimbursable lunch is, what a reimbursable breakfast is, and what the different components are that make up that lunch or that breakfast. So it's not myself or Whitson's that... I mean, we have certain guidelines that we follow ourselves, but we follow that law. You know, the goal is just to provide a variety of foods that will meet the diverse needs of the community, you know? So, and I think we have a fairly diverse menu. There's always room for improvement. And it's just really trying to have as many options as possible that are going to fill the needs of as many people as possible, so.
So welcome. I know you've only been here a couple of weeks.
Well, I've been here since July 10th, actually.
Since July, well, okay, but a couple of weeks with kids in the building. I'm wondering how you see the differences, if you see any, between Haverhill and Brookline and food services in the two districts?
Well, I'll tell you right off the bat, the parents are a lot more involved here than they were in Haverhill, so. Very involved, which is a good thing. I mean, I take that, you know, I mean, they care about it. Not to say that, you know, parents didn't have their concerns in Haverhill and what have you. They did. It's just the sheer amount of feedback that we've gotten from the community. I think, you know, it's a different population that we're serving. The demographics are slightly different here in Brookline than they are in Haverhill. So the challenge for us is that there's a high percentage of paid students. So we have to convince those parents and those students that we're offering them a meal that is worthwhile for them to part with their money every day or a few times a week and what have you. So that's always a challenge, so.
Any greatest hits on the menu? Or anything you thought would be popular and fell flat? I mean, surprises either way, so far?
Not, not yet. I mean, we've only been open for a few days and what have you. I've gotten a lot more feedback about what we should be offering down the road, so.
I heard a report from one parent about a very popular chickpea salad. Is that right?
How we know the source?
So first of all, I just want to echo Ms. Ram's comments about being just very grateful of your willingness to dive in with feedback and make adjustments. So thank you for that. And for sure, the piece about allergens and transparency is very important. So thank you. Those were things we definitely needed to work on. And so, and I think there's a lot of good feedback there. I guess I'm curious about your plan to sort of collect feedback on an ongoing basis about what's working and what isn't working. And the reason I ask is that sometimes, you know, comments, an individual will have a particular perspective. You know, no one they know would ever eat X. Or, and so therefore, everybody must be like that. Or, you know, a veggie burger with cheese is unhealthy. You know, people have things in their minds. And I guess I'm curious, as you are being responsive to parents, how you also sort of take a bigger picture and get a snapshot of where parents across the district are on different issues or different perspectives on things? Because I think there are a few things that are obvious that people are going to react to. But then I think when you kind of get down a level, it just, there might just be different priorities. And I just want to make sure we're not over-correcting for people who are speaking up and we're not hearing enough from families who might not be providing feedback but whose concerns are equally valid.
I think a big component of what I have to do, there's a big educational piece and educating parents about what the components are of a reimbursable lunch, what have you. I think sometimes they have their own preferences. But those preferences necessarily do not translate into what is a reimbursable lunch. And I think everyone needs to understand that in order for us to claim that lunch, that lunch or that breakfast needs to have certain components. And, you know, some parents might feel that, you know, there's too much juice, too much fruit, you know, too much sugar, so on and so forth. In order to have a balanced meal, we need to have all those components. So my goal is, as I meet with parents, is to inform them that, you know, it's not all about opinions and it is about some of that, but it's also, you know, there is a law that we need to follow. And, you know, there are certain components that have to be, that have to be met. And it just can't be a will and you know, you think, you know, do this, do that, don't have that and what have you. There has to be some logic behind those decisions. And I think it's just, you know, meeting with the parents and getting them to feel comfortable with those. And I think parents understand, you know, there are a lot of things that we can do. And there might be some things that in conjunction with the district that they might feel, the district might feel, you know, yes, parents really want to do this, but as a district, we feel that this is kind of the direction we have to go. So I'm not going to... So I'm not going to be making those decisions on my own, what have you. All the decisions that I make, you know, I review it with the district and what have you. And I try to get the district's blessing before moving forward. So I'm not a maverick and I'm not going to do exactly what I want to do when I want to do it. You know, I'll certainly consult with the district before menus go out, before we revise snack menus and what have you, that the district feels comfortable with the product that we're putting out. And hopefully that will meet the needs of most parents and students and faculty and staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will add, Ms. Dickoff, the Deputy Superintendent Dunn has a vision for a process for surveying families for feedback and I will have Deputy Superintendent Dunn share that with the committee at a future meeting. It's a pretty ambitious plan to get feedback for the development of future menus. If the committee remembers, the menu for September was set, the items were set as a part of the contract that was signed with Whitsun's for that first month and then there's flexibility to build future menus going forward. So more information will be forthcoming. It's now my pleasure to introduce someone who is in a position that is often the unsung hero of the district. So it's my pleasure to introduce Lanisha Samuel, who is our new transportation coordinator. Lanisha is our new transportation coordinator, bringing to Brookline experience in team leadership, organizational planning, risk assessment, and record and database management. Ms. Samuel most recently served as the transportation constituent liaison for the Boston Public Schools, as a liaison in a system with over 660 buses and a busy position, being a constituent liaison in the sheer volume of that, the transportation system. Lanisha brings 10 years of experience in the operations field to this role in the public schools of Brookline and has done, I will add, a really miraculous job with the opening of school. And so while I'm introducing her, I also want to thank her for a very successful first five days, six days now, of transportation.
I'm not really a public speaking kind of person, but it's been, it's been an interesting first week here. I have to say, a lot of my challenges was just leading up to Mary Murphy. Really big shoes to fill. Everyone has been pretty helpful in the process. Whenever I reached out for information, everyone, you know, pretty much, you know, gave me the assurance that, you know, we're here to help. So I just want to thank everyone for that. I hope to bring a lot of the practices, some of the things that we've seen worked in Boston Public School, I'm hoping to bring a lot of that here over the next couple of months. My biggest challenge is I see going forward is going to be getting all the information in a centralized place. So right now, it's a challenge, but I'm up for it. And thank you for having me here.
Welcome. And I'm curious, you mentioned there's, you know, a few good practices that you saw from Boston Public Schools that you would be interested in bringing here. And I was just curious if you could give us one or two examples of some of those things?
So for, right now, it's kind of like a gray area as far as transportation goes. What does families do once they come into the district and needs transportation? No one really knows. It's kind of up in the air as to what happened. I know a lot of our information is stored into Aspen and what I would like to see happen is when a family does come into the district, it starts from enrollment where they're told whether or not they'll qualify for transportation there. And then if they are, the system will alert me that they do need transportation, so I'll do my part in getting them transportation. Right now, it's not really happening like that, so that's definitely something I would like to see happen.
So, welcome to Brookline. You're right, you do have big shoes to fill, so to speak. Mary Murphy was an institution here. She knew every street in Brookline and every kid in Brookline almost. And you obviously can't be expected to know that. There's no way. But I think that, you know, bringing, I mean, what she, I think the difference in what I hear you saying is that you want to have some systems and she had everything in her head.
Yes.
And, you know, trying to get that into practice is a difficult thing, but I'm sure she would help you too, you know, if you need any help because she's very committed to this district.
Yes, she was. That's definitely something that I was told, everything was in her head. And when I met with her after my interview, she said to me, "I can see you doing this job, but your biggest challenge will be just familiarizing yourself with the schools you're located." She said to me, "I live in Brookline, so I know everything." And that's pretty much what it's been.
Mm-hmm. So, we're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but most certainly not least, it's my pleasure to welcome Casey No. Miller as our new co-director of special education for grades pre-K through 8. Ms. Miller joins Brookline from the UP Education Network where she served as the Director of Special Education. Prior to that, she was the Director of Special Education of the Early Learning Center and Elementary School for the Community Day Charter Public School, an administrative intern with the Director of Special Education in the Framingham Public Schools, and a school psychologist and team chair for Fort Lee High School in New Jersey, and the program coordinator and a residential teacher at the May Institute for Neurorehabilitation. It's my pleasure to welcome Casey to Brookline and the wealth of experience that she brings to us and to this very critical role for our schools.
Thank you. Good evening. I think this is day 12 for me on the job and I have been visiting schools, meeting with teachers, school-based teams, have had the opportunity to meet a few parents too, which has been really great. For me, the work has always been about equity and opportunities for students with disabilities. And so I'm really looking forward to bringing that passion to the public schools of Brookline. I'm also fine with questions.
Well, first of all, welcome. We're so excited you're here. I think you probably know that Brookline has a very long and proud history of inclusion classrooms. And so, as we think, certainly there's a set of things that's needed for specific populations of special ed students, but we also think about inclusion all the way across the spectrum. And so, I think one of the conversations we've had here is how do we make sure that everyone feels not only that the special ed program is working as well as it needs to be, but also that general education teachers are fully including kids to the extent that they can be and that they should be. So at any rate, just curious if you can just speak a little bit about not only focusing on special populations and what they need, but also thinking about the full range of inclusion and how general, what general ed classrooms need to look like in order to be fully welcoming and accepting?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. It's one that I think a lot of special educators and general educators are asking. Where, in my experience where I have seen success is when our general educators approach the classroom where all the students are there, so they own all of the students. Education begins in inclusion first, so the least restrictive environment. For students both with and without disabilities, I think it is understanding what each student's needs are, I think is at the very basic level, and then having strong curriculum to back that up and research-based instruction. And I think school leadership plays a large role in that as well, but I do think that it starts first in the general ed classroom.
I want to end introductions really with another welcome to the newest members of our team. As you know, as you have known over the years, we have a remarkable, highly dedicated, deeply talented team of educators throughout the public schools of Brookline. And it thrills me to have a group of new members to our team who are equally talented, dedicated, and committed. And hopefully in the snippets, what you started to hear was the commitment that is so important to all of us in Brookline, commitment to students, commitment to families, and commitment to educators to support teachers in this very challenging but most important work that we do. So I wanted to share that as a final thought and again, welcome everyone. Some folks had to leave, but welcome everyone who stayed for the full introductions. It's really, it's a thrill for me and for all of us that you are a part of the PSB
So thank you all for coming and, you know, we'll see you again soon. You're welcome to stay, of course. It's an open meeting and we have a fascinating agenda, but you're free to get on with your evenings. Thank you so much. All right, continuing on, we have a discussion of the 2017-2018 district goals from the superintendent and the deputies.
I sit very quietly up at the table. I should have stayed at the podium rather than moving back. So tonight, I bring back to the committee a both refined and much more focused group of goals, district goals, goals for our work this year. This work was built out of the deep discussion and the many priorities, both priorities and projects and sort of, in some instances, very sort of specific, specific work that we identified for discussion and debate at the summer workshop. We took the conversation and the feedback that the school committee had and from that have refined our goals, the goals for our work, both mine and the deputy superintendents. So I bring these to you tonight. Just very quickly, I just want to take everyone back to the workshop and really highlighting for everyone that these goals come out of both a recognition of the district's many strengths, the, most notably, the high quality of our staff, our team of educators, administrators and staff throughout the district, and the deep commitments to the mission of the public schools of Brookline, ensuring that all of our students receive high-quality education. And certainly, staff enjoying working for the PSB. We have, you know, high levels of engagement, meaningful, high-quality learning, we have cohesive teams, and teams meet regularly. And we have very well-resourced schools with regards to our staff materials and programs. And as a reminder, the challenges that we continue to face are, again, I won't read them all, but highlighting persistent gaps in opportunities for students and outcomes, and notably for particular subgroups of students, insufficient clarity on role and expectations within our system, the insufficient clarity for support that students need, right? What needs to be provided to individuals and teams? This specifically is tied to the feedback, the very important feedback that we've received about the quality and the effectiveness of professional development and feedback across the system, as well as, of course, as you know, the significant growth in student population where we focused on so much on the short-term planning, keeping up with the enrollment growth and not the long-term effects, the organizational systems that we need for a district that's grown by more than 1,500 students in the last decade. Also, insufficient guidance on hiring, significant turnover of principals over sort of several of the past years, increasingly complex health issues for incoming students, and the alignment between our elementary schools and our high schools. So again, not to belabor any of this, but wanted to bring everyone back to, again, the very, the deep strengths of our system as well as the challenges that we face. So following the summer workshop, I just want to highlight for the committee that we reviewed, of course, the priorities, ensuring alignment. We launched work with principals at a very intense and simultaneously very enjoyable leadership retreat planned for the end of July. And we've begun to communicate these priorities as the new school year begins. I also want to take everyone back to really these two fundamental beliefs that Brookline, we really, we shouldn't expect anything less than excellence, exceptional outcomes, and equitable outcomes for our learners, right? We don't want just equitable outcomes if those outcomes are not exceptional. They're not students both receiving the supports they need and achieving at their highest levels. And then, of course, any effective school system, principals are supported as instructional leaders. The central office supports our school leaders so that school leaders can effectively support educators in schools. There's no more important work than what happens in our classrooms. And we need to, we need to provide the right supports for our principals so that our principals can in turn provide that support that our educators need to be their best selves and to be as effective as they can be in their daily work with students. And this really boils down to, you know, the guiding principles of equity, instruction, the classroom, and collaboration. And if you, I just want to take you back for a moment to my welcome letter to both staff and families, as well as, you weren't there, but the wonderful opportunity that our union president and I had to greet educators over the first three days that staff returned to really, to make clear that the pillars that guide our work is that equity matters, right? It is this deep commitment to equity for everyone in all the different ways, right? And how does this intersect for different students, for different families? Equity for our educators, right? Equity matters. And it is through our work to ensure equity, equity of access, that we then get equity of outcomes, equity of opportunity outcomes. Instruction, I've said it, you know, that instruction matters and we need to focus our work on being sure that we are supporting instruction, that we are, you know, where systems need to be put in place to take things off of the plates of school so that more time can be focused on instruction. We need to do that professional support for instruction, certainly the classroom, the centrality of the classroom, right? Nothing matters more than what happens in our classrooms. And that it is only through collaboration that we're able to get and benefit from the varied expertise of, deep expertise of everyone across our system. I've been asked by the committee to articulate my goal, the goal for my work, and I've put a lot of thought into this, into this, both in my first year, a year of listening, learning, and a lot of work, certainly as we know, not just listening and learning. And really, what is it that will make the biggest difference? What work do I need? What work do I need to be effective at so that our schools, our educators, and our students can be effective? And so really, to put it succinctly, this I will read. "My goal is to succeed in ensuring exceptional and equitable outcomes for all learners by effectively supporting principals, organizing the work of the district offices in support of teaching and learning, and addressing those areas that have the greatest impact on student social and emotional growth and energy growth." And so for us to organize ourselves around these principles, I believe that in achieving this goal for my work, our educators are supported to the best ability, or provided the best support that we can provide, and our students are receiving the best supports that they can receive. Now, taking that, we then worked as a team specifically on organizing the work of district offices in support of teaching and learning and addressing the areas that have the biggest impact on students' growth in all aspects, right? In social, emotional, and academic growth. And so our goals and breakdown is follows. The Office of Teaching and Learning, teams at schools led by principals, supported by the Office of Teaching and Learning, faculty is developing a common understanding of what are the instructional practices and what are students doing when high-quality instruction is happening. I had the opportunity to join the Lawrence School faculty meeting, which was just, we have an incredible team at Lawrence on Tuesday. And the team at Lawrence dove into this question. And what was really fascinating is people said, when kids are learning at their best, there's a buzz, right? They identified many other things, but this common thread among all of the teams is there's a buzz. And what the Lawrence team is excited about, in my interpretation at the end of the faculty meeting, is then diving into what is it that students are doing when they're buzzing? What is it that we see students doing? How do we support that buzz, that interaction, that collaborative work that's happening? And so it's a, it's a very school-specific conversation under this common umbrella of the high-quality practices, both instructional and student practices, right? What are adults doing, what are students doing? And the importance of this is that it then guides the decision-making within our school communities. And it guides the decision-makings, the decisions that are made around staffing, interventions, and the list can go on. Along the same line, our principals, vice principals, coordinators, and directors need training on how to give high-quality feedback. So that both the evaluation process, and not noted in this slide, but just at feedback in general, feedback outside of the formal evaluation process, is helpful and meaningful to educators. I think as a committee, you heard both the hard feedback and our frustration, my frustration in particular, that so much time goes into using an evaluation system where so little is gained from it, so little both in, from the educator perspective and quite frankly, from the perspective of evaluators, right? It's, we are complying with the process, we're not doing the process well. And so we really want to work on how do you give high-quality feedback? How is that feedback specific? How do we support someone in implementing the feedback or debating the feedback and thinking about sort of, you know, varying ways that that feedback could be beneficial and implemented in support of students? And continuing down to the third bullet, a really important thing that started, which takes a lot, you know, of coordination, but time incredibly well-spent, where principals and coordinators are traveling across schools, getting to know and understand the work that is happening in our, in our schools, across our elementary schools, in between our elementary, our pre-Ks, our elementary schools, and the high schools, so that we, we understand the continuum, and then we can best support students for success in that continuum. An equally important goal in the Office of Teaching and Learning is addressing structural racism and unintentional bias. And I say that, I want to pause. I say the Office of Teaching and Learning, this is an important goal for all of us. We all own this goal. But articulated how the Office of Teaching and Learning tackles this is focusing on that high-quality instructional practice. And this plays out in a number of different ways. The first is supporting the school-based effort that grew out of the 2016 PD Day with Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum. Our schools are doing incredibly deep and meaningful work, systems that, and ideas that came out of the schools and are very different in their implementation, but all equally meaningful and powerful in their work to, to address the structural racism and unintentional bias that happens in our schools. And so at Lincoln, that looks like book groups that are happening at faculty meetings where folks are reading about and then discussing ideas that can be implemented based on their reading or based on their professional experience, and then as a small cohort trying them. And the principal creating a safe space for people to try and then come back to the larger group and say, "We tried it and it worked," or "We tried it and it didn't work, and here's why we think it didn't work," and making it safe for people to, to engage in that work. At Heath School, this is, I'm going to get this not fully correct, it's called the pineapple? And I will get the details to the committee, but the pineapple is the international symbol of welcome. And so work around Heath to create a culture of welcomeness. And how that's done specifically, but starting with the symbol of a pineapple, and how that embraces the idea that everyone is welcome, everyone is valued, and then what is happening? And the staff engaging in deep professional development reading, how to make everyone feel welcome, in Dr. Tatum's word, not just a part of the picture, but a part of the team, right? Fully, fully a part of what's happening. Continuing to explore embedded honors in some courses in ninth grade so that we potentially increase equitable access to higher-level courses. This is a discussion that has happened at a very high sort of 30,000-foot level, both at Curriculum Subcommittee and here at the school committee. And it's a, it's a conversation that we have heard that should continue with a lot of research, thought, and information to be brought to you for, and publicly for a really full debate about what is this, where has this worked, what does it look like, and what could it mean for students before acting? So this is very much an exploration phase to understand. What we have found, to remind everyone, is that in exploring larger schools, as the high school expansion project started, Evanston Township is one example, this is something that they have, they have done with great success in certain courses, and it's worth us learning more. And along that line, clarifying the course levels and process for ninth-grade course recommendations. The cross-site visits are, I said, were very important. Headmaster Meyer and I, I think the most powerful visit we had was when we visited four K-8 schools over the course of a day and spoke directly with middle school teachers, educators about the process for recommending students for courses at ninth grade. And it was very clear that, that there were different understandings. Folks knew that there were different understandings and were frustrated that there was not clarity about what courses meant, what courses were, what were the requirements for courses, and everyone using a very different process. Embedded in that, and really important to highlight, is everyone's very committed and worked incredibly hard in the placement process that they knew. And so this is our responsibility to provide clarity of information so that our team of middle school educators in our elementary schools can do their best work in recommending students, both understanding the courses and the supports available, so that when a recommendation is a stretch, for example, and people want to make that stretch, understanding how, what exists from, you know, tutorial to sort of any other sort of, of the many options that exist at BHS to support students. And then lastly, continuing to support the development of the identity curriculum. I skipped over a bullet unintentionally, which is the second one. And we have been working very hard to develop a roadmap for very structured professional development for our school leaders, very structured coaching and supports around supporting the very complex work of educational equity. So both professional learning for educators, professional coaching for our educators, as well as support. And so we've been, we've been working to develop a potential partnership with the Equity Collaborative, and I look forward to bringing that to the school committee. It's something that I personally am very excited about and have been working on a lot since the midsummer through now. And I'm incredibly excited about the possibility, really look forward to sharing that, that work with, with the committee. And then developing the culture of collaborative inquiry, this is across all departments, starting with principals, coordinators, coaches, specialists, on a collaborative inquiry process, really as a team deciding what is it that we want to know, what is it we want to figure out, how do we use information, how do we try and determine an action step? Again, the decisions happening in this collaborative group and working to both develop a skillset and support a culture where that, that type of team process for tackling challenges, coming up with ways to address those challenges, and then assessing the effectiveness of what is being implemented, making that not just safe for educators to engage in across the district, but really celebrate that work. It is that level of work, the decision-making with folks closest to the challenges where I and we believe we get the greatest impact on change. And of, of course, you know, launching a process of math program review and working very hard to improve the professional development offerings, again, in response to the great and varied feedback we received in the staff surveys. And the Office of Student Services, supporting our high-quality core instruction, specifically focusing on supporting students with emotional disabilities, improving social skills and managing challenging behaviors in the classroom, establishing clear guidelines and focusing on attendance, discipline, our chapter, our policies around attendance and discipline under Chapter 222, do need to be revisited and updated, as well as a field trip and wellness policy. Wellness policy, of course, something that the committee has worked on and is getting close to being ready for first read. Reviewing the operations of the Office of Student Services, focusing on how we expand inclusion, manage special education caseloads so that we can make sure that the caseloads that our educators have across the system are fair and manageable because they are quite varied. And then really, a review of BEEP, right? And this question has come up, I believe, at the workshop. Mr. Pollak and I have discussed this also on several occasions, and Mr. Pollak puts it best, you know, when the growth in Brookline started, BEEP had 21 classrooms. Brookline has grown by over 1,500 students and BEEP still has 21 classrooms. And is that the way it should be? Do we need to look potentially at an expansion? How is the impact and growth of students in particular who are ultimately being recommended for our RISE program and that growth in BEEP? How is that impacting BEEP and our elementary programming? And this is work that Mr. Zimmerman and Ms. Milstein are incredibly excited about, and there is a roadmap for presentations to the, I'm sorry, the Finance and Curriculum Subcommittee's in the coming weeks. So you should expect to see this information, this work shortly. This is very important as we go into the development of an override budget for the committee to really understand and consider these, the many important questions around BEEP, both in terms of the number of classrooms and as well with the, thank you, I'm not sure why I'm losing my voice, and the, and the needs, the critical needs that we need to address both in the short and long term with our students with significant special education needs and how we best support them. And then really diving into the Office of Student Services and Office of Teaching and Learning, talked about and sort of at a very high level, beginning both an inquiry and review of co-teaching, in particular at the high school. Had a meeting, a very informative meeting with co-teachers at the high school, but the work stopped there. And this is a recommitment to get that restarted so that both offices can work with, with our teams, teams of co-teachers and the team at the high school to really understand, how do we do that best? How do we make sure that within our co-teaching classrooms, we're supporting educators and supporting students so that everyone is, is doing their best? Administration and Finance, if you remember, Ms. Dunn had many pages, and we've narrowed it down to four key priorities. Number one being developing an override budget and plan. Number two is developing the five-year capital plan. Human resources work, including payroll, both improving the effectiveness of the department's procedures, improving recruiting and hiring and retention. In particular, the goal of having the district's employees reflect the race and ethnicity of the students we serve in Brookline. And continuing through the Office of Human Resources and through all of aspects of our district, continuing to build the respectful working relationships that we believe are so critical with our union leadership throughout, through open and honest dialogue. I will add, Mary Ellen, Ms. Dunn and I discussed the one-year and five-year budget development and the one-year CIP, and Ms. Dunn successfully convinced me that that is quite simply just part of her job and is not something that should be listed as an additional goal for the year. So I just say that because implicit in this slide is the effective development of a one-year budget, the five-year budget projection, and the one-year CIP that is a part of the annual budget process. And lastly, is rolling out the policies, I'm sorry, the procedures associated with the policies that the school committee adopted last year around financial assistance, students' fees, fines, and charges. And then in strategy and performance, again, back to this, this notion of the importance of collaborative inquiry, really leading and helping coordinate that process across the different departments, and informing and engaging staff and stakeholders about the ninth elementary school BHS expansion and the devotion school project, and I will add, the BEEP building that is shortly, hopefully, forthcoming, under the, that category of strategic work, certainly under continuous improvement, helping with data from, from the perspective of what do we have and how is it helpful? How do we understand the ways that we can use that to make decisions? Not judgment, but how can we use what we have to make decisions, to inform, not just, not use it to make decisions, but to inform our deliberations about what we should do to ensure that the learning outcomes that we, we strive to achieve are equitable and that access across programs is equitable. So it's really using that tool, that resource that's available to us, to help us, to help inform our decision-making. And then lastly, community engagement, continuing to improve our internal and external communications, developing the staff Intranet. If you remember First Class, there's not a lot of love for First Class, but one of the things that was lost was, you know, folders and a warehouse for documents that was really missing last year in the first full year of using Google, the Google platform. So developing a staff Intranet site and page to put that information back in, information from human resources, from the curriculum coordinators, from special education directors, et cetera. And also commitment to having regular superintendent newsletters to staff and families, and improving our offices' use, the district's, district's use of social media. So I want to bring everyone back to these pillars because while I didn't explicitly state the connection to each of these four pillars, what you should see in these goals is a thread of these four pillars being connected to either individually to different goals or interwoven around the goals. Bringing us back to my goal, my, my goal as superintendent, to ensure that we are achieving what we vision for all of our learners and doing that by best supporting principals and making sure that our district work is in support of teaching and learning and in support of our, as I've said many times tonight, the incredible team of educators that we have, working very hard on behalf of our nearly 8,000 students.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to laminate this. That was great. Open up the floor to the members of the school committee. Yes, Scott.
I would also thank you. I think this is very exciting because it seems as if your vision is really guiding what you want to do. And that doesn't always happen. Sometimes, sometimes people have goals, but it's not, it doesn't have this cohesion, they don't have, the goals don't have this cohesive nature. My question is, how can you? My question is, how can you, how can you maintain this level of excitement? I mean, the excitement of these new people here and how much they're invested in it and how much all of you are invested in it when there's so much to do? And I don't mean that as a light question. I look at those goals and I think, you know, you're going in a number of different directions, all of which come back together. But can, how are you going to make sure you continue to move forward without losing that kind of important desire to do it? I mean, not being totally clear, but you've got a lot to do, and this is a big, big bite that you've put out in front of yourself.
Yeah.
So keep going and not lose sort of the will to do it because you have the passion.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very fair question, and I think that the key in this is making sure that we are always coming back to, is this, is this important? And there are certain things that have to be done, right? And Mr. Pollak and I had a conversation about policies. You know, there are policies that need to happen, and they're important as a baseline information, and that in and of itself is tied to early on, the challenges, right? The lack of information. And so I think as we tie our work and understand how our work is fitting into these goals, you know, it keeps us, it keeps us on track. So I think that's the first thing. The second is understanding that several of these are processes, right? Collaborative inquiry is a process that is going to happen over many years. We are starting with small groups of folks to train folks to understand and also get feedback, how is this working? Is this working among principals, among coordinators? So coordinators can tell us, you know what, this really worked, or this didn't work, so that we can understand how it is benefiting us before taking a leap to say, you know, 400 people are going to engage in collaborative inquiry. I see that work as a, you know, two, three, four-year process that continues to happen to build those, both the spirit of collaboration, but the skill set. The equity work, and I mentioned my excitement to bring to the committee a vision for what skill development, coaching, and professional support principles and our school leaders will receive as a first step. And then that builds into, or is parallel with, how are we supporting the individual work that is already happening in the schools, that is being developed organically, and how does it fit together? So this is a long answer, and it's probably not the specifics that you were looking for, Ms. Scott, because it's a hard question to answer. It's constantly coming back to that question. I also think, quite honestly, as we continue to build relationships, the work, it never gets easy, but problem solving becomes easier. And I'll give an example. Yesterday, I hope this is okay to share, Jessica and I were back and forth with some questions that really needed to be answered. I was out in central Massachusetts, and really rather than wait to have a very limited period of time to tackle them and hopefully solve them before any longer, we talked for an hour. We sort of made the time to talk and really on the go, for me, quite literally.
Did not look down.
Yes, did not look down at the list. But quite literally on the go, like, how do we problem solve? As being in school buildings and working with principals, there are already, you know, a list too long to mention of things that have been able to be addressed by my presence in schools, by Ms. Gitten's presence in schools, by Mr. Zimmerman's presence in schools in these opening days, from a transportation question to a student assignment question. And so I think it's really about staying focused on the goals, it's managing time. I have an incredible partner in Ms. Fitzpatrick, as you all know, who makes sure that I am staying as on track as I can in my work. And I think it's all of that, and it's not easy. And so I've given a bit of a rambling answer because it's hard. Achieving this will be hard, but it's exciting work, and it will be my efforts and our efforts to continually stay focused on this that will be required in order for it to succeed.
I think that what's really important here is that you carve out the time with various groups, the central administration and principals, to really say, where are we now? How are we going? Because if you don't do that kind of checking in and evaluation more often than once a year, you're apt to be this trapped of where you are and you want to come.
I will add for the full committee to know, the first thing before any, well, there were a few things on my schedule already in July, but before too much got added, the first thing I did this summer was schedule out eight to 10 visits to each of our schools and eight to 10 separate visits for the two devotion sites, as well as our three separate BEEP sites. So multiple visits to BEEP Lynch, BEEP Putterham, and BEEP Beacon, as well as attending as, not as a presenter, but intending, attending to observe and potentially participate in faculty meetings in each of our schools at least once, and in many cases, twice a year. And so building out before other things got added, that really what you just highlighted is that critical presence and engagement in schools was the first thing that I did.
So I want to echo the compliments that Barbara made on just how clear, ambitious, but clear and cohesive this is. And my question is, given how you already alluded to the fact that several of these things are really multi-year initiatives, how are you thinking about defining what success looks like for those initiatives in six months, in a year? You know, when we're having conversations about goals again at next year's workshop, how will we know if we've moved in the right direction on any number of these?
So we have just started discussing that and had a pretty significant discussion today, knowing that to both expect the question from the committee, that it would both be asked and that it would be, and that's very fair to ask. And I think, you know, even in my goal is really now defining the, what will that look like? How will I know? How will you know if I am successful in effectively supporting principals? What are those indicators? And where are the points that we will check in? Similar to that equity, I'm sorry, equity, collaborative inquiry cycle, where are the points we check in? Because we will likely do things that are not working, and we have to know, we want to know when something's working so we know to continue it and refine it. We also want to know when something's not working so that we can stop and not persist in something that is ultimately wasting people's time. And so I don't have the full map of that, but you should, you can expect that shortly because it's a conversation that we have already begun.
So I really appreciate the efforts that we're going through, looking at the focus of high-quality instructional practice with unintentional biases and structural racism. But in addition to that, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about the work and opportunities we might offer our staff when we look at racism and our own beliefs and what we bring to the table. And so in my mind, it's more than just, it's a piece of equity, and people come to the job in very different places with very different experiences. But what might we do to help the individual move forward in their thinking, both understanding their own biases, not just in the materials, but within themselves?
Yeah, a great question. I think it's threefold. I think, one, I really need to bring to the committee the plan that each school has developed for their work this year so that you can understand where each of our schools, in their own community assessment of what is the necessary step or steps this year, what each school is tackling, because each of our schools is engaging in work around equity and educational equity. So I will bring that to the committee. The second, I flipped back to this slide, and that's the wrong one. I'm not going to find it. But it's tied to, I'm not going to find it now, but it's tied to the professional development offerings. We need to make sure, we really need to rethink, we invest a lot of money in professional development, and the key here is to make sure that we are investing the money both in what people want and in opportunities that will be impactful in people's professional growth. And I think that it is a fair statement to say that a lot of the professional development that has sort of happened for a number of years has sort of been because that's the way it's been done. And, you know, it's an exciting opportunity to really rethink that. What is it that we are doing around instruction and our own bias? And I think, you know, another piece is, and it's tied to the vision that I have for the work done with school leaders, is that we really, our school leaders need to both understand and need support in how hard this work is and where, you know, it's, people are taking a risk and how to help people stay safe in that risk. And also when something goes awry, how to be sure that that is something that does not affect an individual or a community when it goes awry because people are working to engage in the work. And so it's really, so I will be more succinct, it's threefold. It's us really reassessing and developing professional development plans specifically to include more opportunities. It's supporting the school-based plans that have been developed and begun implemented, begun to be implemented, and it's the professional support this year for our school leaders. I will add, it's also providing the next step at our Fall Professional Development Day, taking the feedback from Dr. Tatum's day to, you know, okay, this, you know, the feedback was, you know, all of this was positive, and now what we hope for next is this, and trying to land a day-long professional development opportunity that is that next. And we are working on that. I'm not quite ready to sort of, to say that it's finalized because it's not, but it's work happening. So that's four pieces that I think are critical this year with respect to your question.
Thank you. Just one short note, a lot of these goals are focused, well, they should be on activities that adults are doing. And so one thing that I think would be helpful when you get to the sort of, how do we, just are we on track, off track, you know, indicators, would be just that through line to students and just helping us understand how the different activities that the adults are engaging in focus and change the trajectory of students in classrooms. Just because I think otherwise, a lot of this sounds great, and it's things that we all talk about, and it definitely feels like you've highlighted the most important ones. But just like what, at the end of the day, what's this supposed to translate into, I think will be great.
Ms. Hederspiel.
So I'm looking at Office of Student Services, and I am just wondering, do we have all our hires now? Do we have all the pairs that we need?
No. So that is ongoing. We are close. We have a number of, we actually have more pending hires, so it looks like we have more vacancies. They're technically still vacant, waiting for background checks, both the criminal background check and the quarry background checks to clear. We are close, but we are not, we're not fully hired. We started this year at a better place than the previous two years, but still not at a point of it being acceptable from my opinion. Of course, wanted to be fully staffed.
So are these paraprofessional positions?
They're mainly paraprofessional positions. We had some very late teacher vacancy positions, one or two. For example, at Driscoll School, resignation for someone who was, took a position much closer to home. And an internal candidate at Driscoll was hired to fill that position, so it created within Driscoll sort of a different unexpected opening, but the school team is handling very well. There is one district-wide position that remains unfilled, that's the Director of Guidance and Clinical Services. We had a search this summer. I would say that, not say, the search ended in a failed search, and rather than make an offer to a candidate that would not be the candidate, the best support, the team in Brookline, guidance counselors, clinicians, and our students, we relaunched the search, and we got an incredibly high-quality pool in the second round of the search, and we are approaching the second round of interviews in that search. I believe, if my memory serves correct, for on my schedule, I have two second-round interviews tomorrow with recommendations from, I believe, it was Mr. Zimmerman, CPAC representatives, sort of an ad hoc committee that did the first round interview. And one other, I just want, for full transparency, there may still be a guidance opening at the high school. I don't know with our new steps to success coordinator, with that internal hire, the team at the high school has been very aggressively engaging in a search since that hire was made.
So I had one more, I'm sorry. So something near and dear to my heart is giving support to principals, and we have a number of new principals. And I'm just wondering if you could be just a little more specific on how you might, what your plans are to offer them support.
So we are continuing with the very generous support from the Brookline Education Foundation. We had really, in the feedback we received from principals who were mentored by Janet Palmer Owens last year. We had very positive feedback from both the team, Dave O'Hara and Jen Buller at Lower Devotion, and Principal D'Nizio at Lincoln. So we're continuing that support and actually been able to expand it so that Ms. Palmer Owens can provide that same level of support to our new principals, as well as continue with less frequent, but still regular check-ins with the folks that she supported last year. We also, last year, were able to have support for our headmaster with the retired superintendent of Somerville Public Schools, Anthony Pierantazi, and that's continuing, and it's going to be less frequent. The added benefit of that partnership and that relationship is that Mr. Pierantazi is, I believe, still hired on a part-time basis to lead the high school construction project to be sort of the district manager in Somerville. So he has both the district experience, high school experience, and school project experience that's so critical for our high school. So that very important support continuing. I have also changed the, in response to feedback from principals last year, the weekly leadership team meetings. In the past and for many years, leadership team meetings were three to four, depending on the month, Mondays a month from three to five. And often, you know, that time is really frenzied. Two hours sounds like a lot of time, but because something happens, a dismissal, and there's a late pickup, or there's a question that needs to answer, you arrive late, it's the end of a day. And, you know, we found last year that we were able really to provide information, but not engage in both building of a team and professional learning. And so this year, we've changed the structure. So once a month, the leadership team will meet for a full day, so from eight to three. Our first full day is this coming Monday, and then on, of professional learning for our school principals, working together, again, the dual goal of building cohesiveness of the team and professional learning of the cohort, and all of us. So I say the leadership team, it's all of us. It's my learning, it's Ms. Dunn's learning, it's that group of 15. And then on every other Monday besides that full day, having the two-hour meeting so we can either follow up or do information. And important in that is not just information delivery, but getting feedback. You know, very important feedback, for example, from principals is looking at the draft wellness policy so that they can ask questions about how that may impact the school community. And Ms. Dunn and Mr. Zimmerman can take that back to you in the policy subcommittee. And then the third level is my support, and I think the amount of time that I plan on spending in schools directly supporting principals speaks to how important that is to me, both in guidance principals speaks to how important that is to me, both in guidance, support, feedback, helping decide on next steps, really helping all of our school leaders be the best that they can be.
Thank you very much.
I just had a quick question that maybe isn't ready for an answer yet, but with the idea of the embedded honors in ninth grade, is the team working on that, thinking about trying to do some kind of a rollout of some sort for FY19 or a year from now or sooner, or really it takes longer than that?
Not sooner and probably longer than that.
Longer than that.
Certainly not sooner and likely longer than that. I think, I think from now until FY19, for something that is, that needs as sort of significant and deep a conversation as embedded honors, it is, I think, best-case scenario to pilot something in a couple of classes a year from now, but that's, you know, but quite potentially beyond.
Okay.
Certainly not, certainly not this year.
I look forward to hearing about it. Ms. Scott.
Are we not doing it to a degree in the English department in 10th grade?
There are, yes, there are some classes. The question, the question, I think, that's different, that really needs to be explored is how might this be something that could work for incoming freshmen? And so giving students support in accessing, you know, the honors curriculum. But you are correct, the English department does offer a course that the team, the English department team worked very hard to develop. So it's not something that's fully new to Brookline or to Brookline High School. The question is specifically with respect to its possibility for some ninth graders.
Thank you. I think it-
I just would add, of course, as I talked about the budget, it's not listed anywhere on here, but of course, we are all deeply working on many building projects. And the planning, from planning that needs to happen to bring devotion back together to the high school project, to the ninth school.
Great. I think it might be safe for you to rejoin us at the table. Okay, so our agenda next has a Brookline High School expansion update, which I'm happy to take up or to sort of roll into the capital improvement section of subcommittees, but it's up to you.
We can still have a vote.
Yeah, no, we can still have a vote. Fine. So let's hold on to that, which brings me to the pleasurable duty of introducing Matty Nagler, our student representative, and who I didn't get a chance to meet back in the spring because I was away during that meeting. So we met tonight. It's a pleasure, and I understand you have a report for us.
I do. So we're back in school, and things have been very smooth as far as transitions go. We have several new teachers who seem to have adapted well to Brookline High and our culture. And we actually have four new BHS mottos that our deans presented to us on the first day of school. And they are, the first one is, "This is hard, you can do it, we can help." The second one is, "Freedom and responsibility." The third one is, "Freedom and responsibility," sorry. The third one is, "You are not done yet." And the fourth one is, "We create the culture we want." And so we've done a lot of lessons with these in advisory, which is our homeroom essentially, and talking about how do we, as students, implement these in our culture and how do we make the most of these? Additionally, we've had several architects come to BHS, and they were all given student-run tours in which the students showed the architects what they considered to be the most important parts of the building, what they want in a new school, and stuff like that. So there are definitely some steps being taken in terms of renovating some facilities. People are also talking about Cypress and the possibility of making it synthetic turf. The sports teams have strongly expressed that they want it to be turf so that they don't have to commute to further fields like Skyline, which is south Brookline, I do that every day, or Downs, which is a little less far but still definitely commute. But the other side of that is that many students actually use Cypress as a place to eat lunch. So those students who are less involved in athletic teams want it to remain grass, so there's definitely some talk about that. There's the new AP Human Geography class that is up and running. I'm actually a student in it, and I really enjoy it. Speaking from personal experience, I really enjoy it, and I think that there's a sentiment shared with my fellow classmates as well. So that's going really well so far. And lastly, sports have really taken off. Not a lot of the drama and other activities have started so much because sports all have preseason. And we actually have a club at our school called Brookline Super Fans, which is a group of students who come together and they try to promote high school events, and they try to get their fellow classmates to attend events, and they've been doing a really good job. And we've been seeing a lot of school spirit in that way. So our first football game, there was a huge turnout for the boys' football game. And then we're having a lot more night, night games. So the boys' soccer team had one last night at Northeastern, and a lot of people went. That was really exciting. And then the girls' soccer team has one at 7:00 PM tomorrow at BU. And there's supposed to be a lot of people coming to that, too. So more on that to come. That's what I have.
All right. Oh, yes, Ms. Schreinerlom.
So something that I've heard at the, that's being discussed at some of the elementary schools, and this is probably not a new topic and it's probably been in discussion for several years and restarts every new school year, are telephones in school and kind of what happens to those phones and the appropriate use of the phones? And something that I've been hearing a lot at the elementary school is like, well, when you're in high school, you can have your phone all of the time, and students use it in class, and the teachers let students use it because they have to record their homework and things like that. And I was just curious for the, you know, the high school experience, are there a lot of conversations at the start of school about kind of how to manage having access to technology and trying to use that for utilizing it, but that it's not distracting from learning?
Absolutely. I think that in terms of, that goes back into the freedom and responsibility policy, and we recognize at BHS that we're very fortunate to be able to use our phones. And we're allowed to use our phones in the hallway. You're never allowed to have earphones in, not in class. That's what some people get confused. You can only have earphones in because they want you to interact with your classmates, obviously, in the hallway, get to know people. Every teacher has their own policy regarding it. As freshman year, I definitely was probably never allowed to use my phone in class. Now that I'm a senior, most teachers are comfortable with me having it out, realizing that we have a lot of stuff going on. Some people use it as a planner to write down homework, et cetera. A few teachers this year, I am a senior, so a few of my teachers have said, "I'm going to treat this like a college course. In a college course, you will be allowed to use, have your computer out." And I'm assuming that you have the responsibility to be using it for good reasons, so I'm assuming that's what you're doing. So it's definitely a steady transition. It's not like you go from elementary school to the high school, and all of a sudden, you can use your phone whenever you want, you're on, you're never allowed to make calls during the day. You have to step outside if you want to do that. So it's definitely like a slow progression, but it's, I remember being a little surprised when I got to the high school because I went to Lawrence, and I definitely was never allowed to have my phone out. So it was a little surprising to see people on their phones in the hallway and things like that, but it's not a crazy jump. Like you slowly accumulate, yeah.
Sure.
So you mentioned one of the mottos was, "You're not done yet." And I was curious what that meant.
Oh, yeah, we had a lot of questions about that, too, for sure. So our deans explained all of these to us. And one of our deans explained that she was a senior in high school, she graduated high school, she's a dean now, and her work is still progressing, and she's still trying to improve. So for my grade specifically, they're saying, "Yes, you're a senior, and yes, you're going to graduate, but you have so much more personal growth and development to do and recognizing that, and then helping other people recognize that, too." So, yeah, yeah. Sure.
So how did your fellow students respond to these four mottos? I mean, one of them, I think, has been around for a long time. The freedom and responsibility has always been there. When my kids were there, it was there.
Sure. Honestly, I think they've all kind of been part of our culture for a long time, and this is just the first time we're actually using words to describe them. So I think they're not, they didn't come as much of a shock to people. I'm a senior mentor, which means I work in advisory with now sophomores. And we did a lesson where we talked about these, and we had to give an example of what each of them meant. And I think people, and we talked about which ones we thought were the hardest to succeed in and the easiest, and it's, people definitely had a range of answers. But I think people, just because they're already kind of part of our culture, people already kind of accepted them, and we could easily think of examples and ways to implement them in our culture and things like that. So it wasn't much of a surprise, but yeah.
And what sport did you say you play against?
In the, I run track, and then in the fall, I play soccer. And that's when we have to commute to Skyline, which is a little bit of a drive.
How do you get there?
We have a carpool system, but now that we're mostly seniors, the seniors drive the underclassmen.
Okay, thank you.
I was wondering if you could just give us a little vision into your AP Human Geography class. The changes in the high school curriculum are actually brought to school committee. And so we heard about it last year, and it just sounded really exciting. So like, first week, what, you know, what? We all wanted to-
I wish I could take it.
Yeah, we all wanted to take it. We all wanted to take it.
Sure, well, I can help that a little bit, I guess. So some assignments we've had, for example, that might help, the first assignment we had was to draw a mental map of Brookline. And so you're not allowed to look up what Brookline looks like or where anything is, and you just have to think based on where I've been and what I know, where do I think the elementary schools are? He didn't tell us what to include, my teacher. So it's also really interesting to see who included what, and who, like, some kids, some students had their home at the center of their map, and that, what does that mean about them as students? And some people had BHS at the center of their map, and what does that mean, you know? We're definitely doing, I think this is kind of the base week, so we're doing a lot of more geography than, and then I think we involve human aspects of that later. So talking about like different regions on the map and stuff, we were introduced to a very cool website where you can choose a state, and then you can choose the demographic of people, the age, everything that you want to look for, and you can look at certain, like, health issues based on county. So you can look at Massachusetts and say, "Where are the most heart failures? In which county?" And then we can start saying, "Why is this?", asking questions like that. So that's what we've been doing so far.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Superintendent's report.
So I am pleased to report to the committee that we had a very successful opening of the year. And I want to extend my thanks to everyone, principals, vice principals, school secretaries, central office, staff custodians, food service, educators, everyone who worked tirelessly to make sure that the school year opened so successfully and seamlessly. As you know, everyone returned to school Friday, September 1st, and our BEU president, Jessica Wenderschubow, and I visited each school over the three opening days, spread across September 1st, 5th, and 6th, to jointly welcome our educators back to a new school year. And it was really, it was exciting, I think, for both of us to have the opportunity to see everyone, see everyone together, and welcome folks back for a great year. I started my visits to schools on Friday, I'm sorry, on Thursday. I finished the K-8 schools in BHS tomorrow. We'll be at two of the beep sites, and we'll wrap up the final beep site on Monday, I believe. As I mentioned before, my plan for the year is spelled out here in this report as well. Would like to take a moment to congratulate three educators in the public school of Brookline. Janet McNeil, our K-8 Science Coordinator, Mark Goldner, a grade seven and eight science teacher at Heath School, and Melissa London, a grade six science teacher at Pierce School, on the publication of their book, which I have one copy right here. It's actually sold out right now on Amazon. And I looked on Amazon, and it's out of stock. "The Stories of Science: Integrating Reading, Writing, Speaking, and Listening into Science Instruction 6 through 12." This book grew out of a project initially funded by a Brookline Education Foundation grant, supporting a professional development course for teachers titled "Weaving Science and Literacy." Their publication of their book is a recognition of their outstanding work. And further, it demonstrates the many ways that instruction can be strengthened by integrating literacy into content instruction. And I really want to pass along my congratulations to Janet, Mark, and Melissa for this very significant accomplishment. If you turn to the second page, I want to give an enrollment update to the committee with the very strong asterisks and caveat that these are not our certified October 1st enrollment numbers, but important for context. So as of September 13th, our enrollment, as you can see, K-8 is 5,486 students, 912 is 2,069, and total K-12 is 7,555. Currently, our kindergarten enrollment is 609, with the Office of Student Affairs projecting that this could reach 614 by October 1st, based on the appointments that are scheduled but have not yet been held. And for a comparison, so comparison to this date a year ago, sort of this, you know, a week into school a year ago, our K-8 enrollment has increased by 82 students, 912 by 74. So the K-12 has increased by 156 students. With an important caveat for the committee, or just sort of an asterisk farther down, is that there are currently 20 appointments scheduled for the coming days. So we could expect that that number of 156 is likely to grow closer to 180, if not slightly higher, by the October 1st certification, based on the appointments. These were the appointments scheduled early in the morning, and the Office of Student Affairs is expecting a few more. So I'll continue to update the committee with another unofficial update on September 28th, followed by an official update, once we have our certified October 1st numbers, reminding the group that the certification process does take about two to three weeks to make sure that it's correct, so we won't have those numbers on October 1st or really till mid-October.
Do you mind taking a question on this now?
Sure, not at all.
Sorry. So my question is, looking at these numbers, were the buffer zones helpful to you to be able to prevent adding a new section at one school or another?
Buffer zones were helpful. I, you know, when you look at the numbers, if you look down at Runcle, for example, last year, Runcle was 597, this year it's 614. The enrollment pinch at Runcle continues to be strong, and the buffer zone's really critical for it not going any higher. We were not able to honor really all but any, or maybe a small handful of requests that were Runcle with other schools. Runcle, Driscoll, Runcle, Heath, Runcle, Pierce were largely buffered to Heath, Pierce, Lincoln, Driscoll. So in that respect, the buffer zone was helpful. The buffer zone was also helpful, too. As you know, as grades grew, there were certain grades, for example, at Lawrence that were lower and that were higher at Pierce, and so families that were living in the Pierce-Lawrence buffer would go to Pierce. But at another grade, the family, to keep class size respectable, the families would be offered to Lawrence. And so the buffer zones continue to be, continue to be helpful in trying to manage the enrollment across our schools.
And have you had, I'm sorry, just one quick, have you had to add any sections?
So if you, we have not added any sections beyond the section, the funding, the position that the committee approved last spring for a fourth section at Driscoll. So Driscoll School was a full-three-section school. We added a fourth third grade, which resulted in the art room being moved and divided, actually, not divided, but two art spaces being created, a learning center being moved, and a new Metco office being carved out of what was previously an unused space.
I just want to just, I do, I don't know if anybody else does, I do like to see a more expanded breakout of school grades.
Sure.
So in the, I would just say, in the, if, in the future, when we're presenting this, it would be great to-
Absolutely.
-to see that. I know it's, it's nice to have more, less data, less, you know, clutter on the page.
I will email the spreadsheet tomorrow morning that Ms. Patrick and I use in our work monitoring, and I will send sort of the caveats of sort of our operating assumptions on that, on that sheet and what the different terms, so that you can see it broken out, section by section, grade by grade, across all of our schools. We have that, and I can easily share that with you tomorrow, and we'll bring an updated one for, or include it in the next report.
And since we're doing questions in the middle, can we go back to just one piece on the opening days?
Yeah, absolutely.
There was some discussion, including in my household, about full-time start for beep this year. And as I understand it, or what I've been told, is it's not necessarily different than what it's been in the past. And then I thought back to last year, and I thought it was a little bit problematic last year as well, now that I remember it. But there's effectively four transition days for beep. That is hard on families. It's hard on my family, and we have the ability to deal with it. If there are families who don't have the ability to deal with it, I can imagine it's hard on them. I understand that it, teachers, especially with students this age, need a lot of time to adjust and to bring in particularly students who are just starting school for, or a school-like experience for the first time, and dealing with issues that may arise as a result of our inclusive model. But I think that's something that we should, we should think about, and whether or not it's, all of those days are necessary, or whether we can- it's, all of those days are necessary, or whether we can, we can cut into those.
Okay. We will, we will look into that and come back to the committee. If you look at the table, the, yeah, you can sort of see the column on the left, the September 13, 2017, those are our current numbers in our K-8s, as opposed to September 6, 2016. So, you can see nearly all of our schools are up, some, you know, relatively significantly, with Lawrence being up over 20, 20 at this point, Driscoll also having a big jump. I would just add, I shared at the town school partnership meeting yesterday, just a reminder, we are working to try and get some concrete information from Chestnut Hill Realty around Hancock Village. But if you remember, when apartments went offline several years ago for renovations, Chestnut Hill Realty informed principal Dr. Mary Brown that somewhere between 50 and 60 students would leave, and that Dr. Brown and the district could expect that, based on Chestnut Hill Realty's projections, a 50 to 60 student drop. And that panned out to be accurate. And so, you know, without new information, we expect sort of to think about the fact that when that renovation is done, and we expect some of it to be done over the course of this current school year, during the school year, that we will start to see the enrollment at Baker go up. And we're trying to understand, based on the renovation, should we expect that it will be 50 to 60 students up, which takes Baker back to where it was over 800 just several years ago? Will it be a smaller number because of how apartments were renovated, or potentially a larger number? And again, that, that is all separate from the proposed development for the Hancock Village property. So, I just, I share that as an important piece of information for the committee to hold with respect to enrollments at Baker.
When you, when you give us your report on the, with the more detailed information that Ms. Glover asked for, it would just be helpful to know your sense of which sections or which grade levels you're keeping an eye on, which ones are near or either above our guidelines at this point, or just near or close to it, or, as you just mentioned, just that we might be expecting in extraordinary circumstance, and that you're paying attention to. Which ones you're, which ones you're flagging and paying attention to?
So, I will tell you now, it's a somewhat confusing system. Green is at the guideline, or slightly above. So, yellow on the spreadsheet is sort of mid-above, and red is, you know, several students above the guideline. And I'll explain that when I send out the spreadsheet.
Okay.
So, those, all those cells are colored, so that you can quickly identify where, based on the school committee guidelines, you know, we're closely watching.
Right. And I think it's just important for us to actually then have that as a conversation at some point, as to, at what point do we feel like we actually need to split it into another section? If it means renting a property, it means renting a property, but those, those class sizes are too large. So, I don't, I don't want to assume that, at any rate, okay.
I am pleased to announce late breaking news from yesterday, that the district's IDEA grants, the FY 18240 IDEA grant was approved, in the amount of $2,100, $2,153,483 for the period of September 1st, 2017 through 8/31/2018. This is a significant grant, and I want to thank many people in the Office of Student Services and the Office of Administration and Finance for their work in submitting this grant. It funds a number of positions in the district, and is a very important grant for, for, for Brookline. The BHS, as Ms. Nagler, Nagler shared, the architects have been at BHS, working on the BHS expansion project, getting the information that they need, and questions answered, so that they can begin the schematic design process. Prior to this week, so this week, the team is spending three full days at the high school. Today, they just completed day two. Will be at the high school for a full day tomorrow. Prior to that, they have met on multiple occasions with Headmaster Meyer, myself, Dean Ramos, Assistant Headmaster Hal Mason, and others, looking, both asking important and very detail-focused questions about the educational plan that has been developed, as well as working with us through the space summary that was developed by HMFH in the feasibility study, in their feasibility study. So, it has been really exciting work, and the team of architects at Ron, I have to say, are incredibly responsive. And I'll give a small example. They learned where the science department had visited over the last year to year and a half, different schools that they visited, and they brought pictures of spaces in those rooms, some of which Ron has designed, some of which others have designed, so that conversations about what space is critical, what do our educators believe is important for the setup and the space in our science rooms, could be grounded in the spaces that our team had visited. And it's a real attention to detail that is important to highlight, because it speaks to the level of engagement that the Ron team has with educators. They also said today, at the end of a session, remember that our engagement with the team at BHS in Brookline is not just in the schematic phase, it is throughout schematic, it is throughout design. This will be a long partnership of working with, with town of Brookline, with BHS, with the team of educators. So, very exciting work. The team of architects will be at the First Building Committee meeting, which is Friday morning, September 29th, I believe, at 8:00 a.m. Leadership team equity work, I highlighted this earlier, so there's some, I won't spend time now, but I do want to highlight that it was really, it was incredible, those three days. And then, at the end of August, the team of all of our administrators, coordinators, directors, deans, associate deans came together at Wheelock College for a day, working on high-quality instruction, how to give meaningful feedback, and policies and procedures. And Dean Ramos did not want to be recognized for this, but to add a bit of brevity, added to the report that she won a giant game of rock, paper, scissors among 70-plus people. Thank you.
We are, let's, let's go on to Subcommittee Reports. Ms. Tram, finance.
Finance, met once over the summer to, and the, the primary purpose of the meeting, there were a number of updates, but we began to talk about laying out a calendar to prepare for the override, and the upshot of that is that the, that calendar will sync up with our budget calendar, and we, Ms. Dunn has already provided some analysis to begin those conversations, which we've reviewed over the summer, which is both, we have projections, and we have a comparison to the last three-year budgets, to what we had planned in, in the previous override, and also what our, how, how our current projections match with the projections that we saw then. So, that, that information already exists, and the sharpening of, of our pencil will occur over the next several months, through course of our typical budget process. We will see a first draft of the, the budget calendar at our next finance Subcommittee meeting, which is happening next week. We will also review a first draft of the, the budget guidelines. In other, we also just heard that there was a town school partnership meeting this week, and I can give a quick update on that, as David and I, and Andrew all attended. So, we will review the, the final state revenue numbers in, in more detail in Subcommittee, but the upshot is that we didn't lose anything, which is great. State revenue is, is up by less than 2%, so, so for us to remain whole was, was really good news. There was some growth for the school, after it went through the 50-50 split, we had an increase of $47,000. That will help us to partially cover, not completely cover, a shortfall we have in the circuit breaker. The other item of note from that meeting is that because both town and school finance staff is, is relatively new, they have decided that they want to go through a process of reviewing the partnership MOA, and just to make sure that, that the way we have done things in, in the town school partnership is the way we want to continue to do things. So, there's no recommendation at this time, but I just wanted folks to know that, that that review will, will occur. That is, yes?
When was the last MOA done?
Just a decade or more ago.
Longer. It's typed on a typewriter.
That's what I thought, too.
It's probably 1986, and Mr. Modigliani was the chair of the advisory committee at the time. But there might be more recent one, that was last semester.
Was that the 50-50? That was the last time?
I think there have been iterations, but that's, but the one on the typewriter.
It has gone under some reviews since then. I know the last override study committee reviewed the, the partnership guidelines, and, and sort of didn't make any recommendations for changes at that time, but I do think it makes good sense, given new financial leadership in, in both the town and schools, that they take a look at it.
Even not giving it, one should look it over.
Yes, one should look it over, yes.
Everyone's allowed to say if it works or not.
I just want to add for the committee, Ms. Tram Jackson mentioned a shortfall in circuit breaker. For years, the circuit breaker reimbursement was 70%. So, our, our circuit breaker submissions were up slightly, but the reimbursement rate, the state reduced it to 65%. So, we had done our budget projections based on that 70% reimbursement rate, which changed in, in its final rollout. And so, that resulted, I believe, in about $129,000 difference from what we expected based on our submissions and a 70% reimbursement rate.
Let's move on to capital, and I think I'll start with Ms. Dickoff and the Brookline High School expansion update and vote.
Okay, as you will recall, town meeting last May approved funds to continue further feasibility and schematic designs for the high school project. And Mr. Masak, who's our building, I don't know, he's our building department.
Project manager.
Project manager, thank you. That is the word I was looking for. Negotiated contracts with them, and those are for kind of our approval here. I mean, so, the brief update on the project is that, as the superintendent said, the architects in particular have been working very closely with the school administration to complete the, the space summary, and really understand what the needs are, validate things, ask questions, and think about new opportunities and ideas, building on the terrific work that HMFH has done, and now educate, engaging the next level of educators and, and teachers in the process, and students. I think the, the only outstanding, there are four building committee meetings this fall, which, if I have a minute, I should have thought to, to talk about, two of which were, the first two of which were on there, were on the calendar in September and October, September 29th, October 25th, in the evening. And then, there'll be a couple more in November and December. And the one thing that I'm still waiting to hear from either the architect, or Mr. London, or someone, is kind of what is our public engagement schedule and calendar, and when will the architects be ready to give more, create sessions for residents and parents to be, to be part of the process? So, that's sort of an outstanding question that I have, that we haven't quite gotten to on the, on the work plan. But they definitely understand that the, the goal is to prepare a number that comes out of this process in Q1 of next year, in time to prepare for an override vote in May of 2018. So, that is still the, the current course and speed. I'll let you know if anything different happens. I think I have the reputation in that group for being the one that has my foot firmly pressed on the gas pedal as fast as, as it will go, and somehow, we're, we're still moving forward, so that's, that's great. And there's also an ongoing set of conversations with, about how to engage the MBTA in, in the air rights question, and the discussion about, about building over the team. So, that's, that's ongoing as well. But at any rate, at this point, we need to vote the contract for Hill and the contract for Ron. Do these need to be two votes, Ms. Dunn, or one? Two votes? Okay.
I would, I would just add on the, the owner's project man, outside owner's project manager, this company called Hill, one of the things that the committee of seven was impressed with is that one of their key core staffers has worked on MBTA license, or whatever it is, easement, leasehold of the air rights a lot, and she, with a straight face, told us that, on a couple of occasions, that she felt confident that we could, we couldn't have signed agreement, but we could understand what we, where we could get to, and what we might or might not be able to do in terms of building over the tracks by the end of October, which I, I found highly impressive, that, that, that they could understand that so soon. So, I'm looking forward, looking forward to hearing about that.
All right.
I just have a quick question about the new architect, Ron. What are some of their more recent projects that you may know about?
So, there's a, a very nice science building at Milton Academy. It's easy to get to. I mean, you have to probably call ahead if you want to visit it. The...
Windsor School.
And the new, the big building directly across the street from the main entrance of the Hospital of Beth Israel at Windsor, which is theater, and athletics, and parking, and stuff. So, those are the two high school, recent high school buildings, and then other buildings. The most notable local building that they've done recently is the glass addition to the Cambridge Public Library, on the same green as the Ringe and Latin, and of course, Tanglewood 25 years ago. And there's a very nice library in Mattapan, right on Blue Hill Avenue, that's got really nice learning spaces, and it's, that, that you can just walk right into, the public library. I like, I like that building.
And if you go to their website, you'll see all these things.
No, I know the Windsor building quite well, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I will move the, the contract in the amount of $239,000, $239,994 with Hill International, who is our owner's project manager.
These are contracts through, basically through May. Just keep this feasibility to and schematic design. I will second that.
I do, though.
Oh.
But that's okay.
Charlofsky, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
All right, I will move the contract in the amount of $1,500,000 with William Ron Associates for designer services.
I'll second this one. All in favor?
All in favor.
I'm sorry. Slow down.
Hold on. I actually have a question.
Mr. Glover.
That's okay. And maybe, this may be a question for you, Mr. Pollack, I don't know. What is the, or, I don't know, maybe it's...
Excellent.
What, what is the deliverable at the end of this piece of their work? Or what have we spent?
Well, it's, it, Ms. Dunn may have something to add, or, but it, I, it basically is the same deliverable that would be required in an MSBA partnership for the completion of schematic design. So, that's the big, that's the big turning point in the way contracts are structured under the MSBA's guidelines, or, and their contracts, their agreements with, with towns, is that you, you work really in, in, you do a feasibility study, and you do schematic design, and at the, this, this is briefly the MSBA's way. And at the conclusion of schematic design, with design documents of one scheme and a schematic design cost estimate, that then you come to a funding agreement with the MSBA, and then that funding agreement is ratified by the town, in our case, would be town meeting. And so, then you, you actually have a funding agreement. And then, everything after that has to work within that funding agreement, so you fix the budget. So, you have enough of a design to fix the budget. And then, from the town's interest and the town side, you authorize the additional expenses, which are the significant expense of producing the construction documents to go out to bid, but what MSBA structures, and what our town also structures, is that we ask for authorization from town meeting, and if we're in, doing an override, we also... if we're doing an override, we also ask the voters to authorize not only the expenses of doing the construction documents, but also the commitment to then build that building, because what we don't want to do is spend, you know, three or five or seven or eight or 10 million dollars on a construction drawing set and with uncertainty about whether the town actually wants to build it or not. So that's, it's a big turn.
So, so we expect to come out at the end of this with a single scheme?
Yeah.
Yes, this is the, these are the schematic design documents that basically, they're not detailed, but this is, this is the project. It's a project definition with a project, a detailed construction budget that has all the details, this thick, but also it says this is the cost.
Right. So that, and based on the conversations that we've had before, that scheme is going to be construction of full building over the MBTA air rights?
No.
Is that, or maybe?
No, that has to be clear. By the end of October, we will know whether we think it's reasonable to proceed on our schedule with an air rights building, or whether the MBTA says basically, no, we are actually not going to allow you to do that. We're not interested in it. We can talk forever, but it's not going to happen, in which case we change and we don't do an air rights building.
But within this, within this scope, it's not that specific, hasn't been that fully defined yet as to what they're actually going to produce.
Right. So what they're working on now, these contracts, both of them are to manage something called feasibility two, and this is part of feasibility two, is finding out the air rights piece, as well as defining some of the other components, like whether there's, what work might be in the project from a town standpoint at Tappan Gimm and, you know, outliers or whatever. But essentially, yes, feasibility two will figure out what we're doing vis a vis air rights. And then the schematic design, there'll be an early part of schematic design that'll look at multiple options, too. It'll get narrowed down to one, and it'll get drawn, and it'll get presented.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, I would just say that it sparked one other update, which is that I think folks know that on the town meeting, the November town meeting warrant, warrant article four is for the taking of 111 Cypress. And so if people have questions or thoughts about that, feel free to ask me. The advisory committee will be having its public hearing on this in early October. A date has been floated, but not finalized. It's not been finalized, but it's been floated. And so when it gets finalized, everybody should come if you want to come, or just add questions in there. There might be some point at which we take, we usually don't take positions on warrant articles in general, but sometimes we get asked to take positions on them if they're related to the schools, and we might be asked to take a position on warrant article four. So. There are also, I should say one other thing. Somebody mentioned the TERF, our student representative, Ms. Angler. And so there are concurrent conversations with other boards. There's a conversation with the transportation board about the overall town TDM plan, Transportation Demand Management Plan, and what role permits and whatnot will fit, high school permits in particular will fit into that process. So that is an ongoing conversation in parallel, as is the conversation with the Parks and Rec Commission around specifically Cypress Field and TERF, but also the Tappan Gimm and the needs around that. So there's a long-winded answer to your question, but Ron, within the Ron contract, since we're still in discussion about this vote, those pieces are in there as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Parks and Rec are doing a design review of the field.
Yeah.
So that's in process concurrent with the rest of this, which is a good thing, and it should happen. And we just have to make sure that the quad is included in one of these projects. That's all. Just saying.
Let you and Ray duke it out.
We have to have quad done.
No, no, I think that's, it's not, it's, you know, Ray's up to making sure that budget and scope match, but to scope, we can weigh in on. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, over to you, Ms. Charlofsky.
Well, thank you. As many of you may or may not know, we had a meeting on Monday. And I think I'll start with the first issue of the license agreement with the Brookline Teen Center. All of you got a letter. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to read it. Which ever.
So what this is, is a memo from Deputy Superintendent Dunn to the school committee, requesting the school committee consider approval of a license agreement with the Brookline Teen Center for Pierce School. As you know from discussions about space, the enrollment has grown so significantly at Pierce. While we've been able to accommodate the classroom space, we have hit a breaking point in the common space of the gym and are no longer able to schedule gym classes effectively, physical education classes effectively at Pierce, allowing for everybody to have time in that space. So when the decision was made to not pursue additional square footage at 62 Harvard, in particular because of the cost, the overall cost of 62 Harvard, a new approach was considered. Our director, health and fitness coordinator, Tina Bozeman, former principal, Chris Kelly, and current interim principal, Leslie Ryan Miller, began working with Matt Cooney, the executive director of the teen center, as well as Mary Ellen Dunn and various town offices, to look at the possibility of leasing space at the teen center. And this proposal is just that, the ability to lease space at the teen center for physical education and health for Pierce School. It doesn't seem like a lot when you look at it in terms of the scheduling. It's three hours a day. It's mainly eighth grade, but the, it gives the, it's the relief, the release valve on that pressure in the gym space that allows physical education to be effectively scheduled for the entire school. Included in the packet is messaging that interim principal, Ryan Miller, has sent to families, as well as information from the teen center that Ms. Dunn could answer detailed questions that the committee may have.
Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Fethersfield.
Now, I know I was at the subcommittee meeting. I should have asked this then, but I've been thinking about this ever since.
No, sometimes thoughts come later.
So just, could you, somebody just explain to me how we're going to get this whole group of eighth graders over to the teen center in a safe way, almost every day, or three times a day? It seems...
Oh, twice.
Twice? Twice a week? How many times a week?
Oh, well.
Three days?
So.
Anyway, I'm just, how, does a paraprofessional walk with them? How do they get there? Because that's, it's not far, but it is, it is a distance. And they're leaving the school grounds, going past several buildings and busy streets, so.
One thing quickly, as Ms. Ryan Miller was speaking and talking about four buildings that the campus of Pierce, I'm counting three buildings. I'm wondering what's the fourth? This is the fourth building she was talking about. Go ahead.
So if you, the second to last, sorry, the last page of the packet has a proposed schedule. And what you'll notice on the schedule is that there are three staff who would be assigned. And so this schedule was developed by the team at Pierce. And what you see is that students would report. So the sections, if I take you to Monday, students who are assigned to homeroom eight dash one, eight one, would report to the teen center at eight o'clock for their physical education class, followed immediately by health. So they would report directly to the teen center in the morning at eight o'clock, have attendance taken there, and have two periods there. And then with the staff members, so in this case, you know, eight one and eight two, at the end of the period at 9:30, would be escorted back across the street by Mr., sorry, Ms. Reed and Ms. Schoenfeld. So the plan is to have students arrive there. Now, there are students who arrive to Pierce on bus. I know Ms. Ryan Miller has a plan for that. I don't have the specifics, but I know that they have thought through how are students who are reporting to the main building, whether it be for breakfast or arriving on a bus, how will they be escorted to the teen center? And as I said, I don't have the details of that plan, but this is how it would work. So it's not a back and forth over multiple periods. It's a start for two groups of students and then returning together.
And so with the, what do we call the guards, the safety, the crossing guard? Thank you. Are they, they're not involved at all in the, in the transitions because they're off duty, right?
Not on the return, and I don't remember if there's a crossing guard at that intersection in the morning. Certainly that.
There is. Oh, there is, yeah.
Yeah. So that crossing guard would be there for the eight o'clock. And then our staff would escort students back at the nine thirty-five.
I believe that they go off duty at eight thirty?
I believe so.
So that would do plenty of time. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I'll move that we, move that, to authorize Town Council to enter into license with the Brookline Teen Center in the amount of $50,000. I think we should include that in the, in the authorization.
Per year, right?
With the attached terms. Yes, per year. And I think it's a one-year lease, a one-year license. It says three years?
It's a three-year agreement. And we're committing to, this is one year, a one-year license.
Okay.
Is that right, Ms. Dunn?
So should we, will we have to renew it each year? Okay.
It's a, it's a license. Each license is one year in length. We have a three-year agreement to, so year two, this may come back to because terms may change, space may change for each year. There's a CPI accelerator in the amount as well, as part of the, for the second renewable license years. So we're currently working with Town Council to negotiate all of that language and renewals at this point. So I don't know specifically what that language is.
It's our, it's our option to renew.
Our option to renew.
It's two one-year options to renew. Okay.
And I assume we will get the contract or the license to sign once it's finished, but this is the, to go, in order to proceed, we need to vote this.
And I also just want to say out loud is that the classroom capacity, we only have $45,000 in it. That's how much we had reserved, sort of moving into this RFP process. So there's a delta of $5,000 that needs to either come from classroom capacity because it magically is there, because Charlie didn't spend money last spring. I don't, we're checking out where that is, or in October, there'll be a transfer or some allocation from the operating budget to pay, make that payment. So I want to make sure the committee members know that they're voting something that we still need to find $5,000 worth of funding for.
I moved it.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, so going on, we had two other very interesting conversations that will be coming back to the committee, but just to give you a little bit of a preview. One had to do with an electric car charging station at Devotion School in the new project, and one that basically the consensus of the committee was that something we do want to have. We also get a point from lead, a lead point by doing this. There were some small issues of, you know, how, how is it managed, who takes care of it, and those things. The town already has two other electric charging stations, stations. And so we have to work together with the town to make sure that this one is incorporated into some of the town processes, whether that be the maintenance of it, or if we are to charge for the maintenance of that to those who might use it. So that's going to be held upright. I don't think we need to vote, Ms. Dunn, we don't need to vote the electric charge station. It's just more of an FYI, and it will probably come back at some point. The second piece that we also had a very significant conversation about was the, a twofold one, one having to do with the Driscoll heating and ventilation system that, I'm trying to think, I think it's been on the CIP for at least three years, maybe a little bit more. It is a steam heating system that needs to be replaced. And so there's been a number of discussions about what should happen. The funding in 2018 was for $400,000 for, in fiscal year 2018, for $400,000 for plants and specs, and then $4 million is in the CIP in 2019 to replace it. We had Carlos De Souza come from Garcia, Galuska, and De Souza, the engineers, HVAC engineers, no, MEP engineers, right? What are they called?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay. To talk with us about different options, some being just replacing it with the heating system, another being replacing it with a system similar to what's going to be going into Devotion School, and a third being a combination, more efficient system that, of course, was the most expensive one. So, but the delta between just putting in a heating system and putting in this more energy-efficient and more, a better system was about $800,000 to $1 million. So, but we're talking a total of, we have $4 million already in the CIP, so would be closer to $5 million. Well, one could think of it that way. I don't think of it that way. I think of the ability to teach and to learn in a building that one can feel comfortable in. And part of this, the reason that we're talking about that, I mean, you know, a number of years ago, we never thought about putting any kind of conditioning of air into a school, but it's gotten warmer. And it's been very difficult for teachers and students to be in building. We have students who have IEPs that require the room to be at 70 degrees or 72 or whatever. And those, we are doing a lot of piecemeal air conditioning in many of the buildings. And that was the second part of our conversation. What should our policy be about having air conditioning, well, not air, let's call it conditioning of air in the school, in the schools, where, what do we expect for new buildings coming online? And I would say that Devotion is the, you know, certainly where I think we would want this to be. And then what do we want to do with the schools that are, that need replacements? And, and we've gotten a lot of parents calling. I've had a number of Lawrence parents calling me to talk about their third floor and the impossibility of being there during the really hot days that we had in the spring, and late spring. All that to say, there's nothing that the committee has to do is more informational here, but I'm happy to answer any questions, or if somebody else had something to add to what I described to date. I think the one other piece that we've requested of Mr. Simmons and Mr. Gillis is to do a report as to what exists today in all of our buildings, so that we know the equity among, or disequity, no, inequity, among the different buildings. And so, and along with that, a cost estimate of what it would take to bring all the buildings to a similar level of comfort.
I'll just add a couple of things, trying not to get too either technical or long-winded. The term that Ms. Charlofsky used, HVAC, HVAC, is, are the three components of a mechanical system, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning. And I think we often, you know, we all know about heating, living in New England, we all know about air conditioning. Ventilation is, we all know critically important. We need fresh air, and children need fresh air to learn. And, but also the code requirements for ventilation are very different today and much more extensive. And so two things about the Driscoll building. One is that currently, the way the heating and ventilated, well, both the heating system and the ventilation system works is, there's all these machines that are plugged into the outside wall in the classroom, in every classroom. They're noisy. And what they do is they pull...
They're called unit ventilators.
Unit ventilators. They pull outside air in through the wall, the brick, and they heat it and then blow it into the classroom. And then in the corridors, elsewhere in the building, there are exhaust ducts that, and fans that just pull air out of the building. fans that just pull air out of the building. And that's the whole system. So in addition to the noise in the classroom, we also have no energy recovery. Essentially, to get fresh air, you're exhausting all the air that we've just spent money heating. So it's a very, so both to get a more efficient system and to meet current code requirements, we can't simply replace the heating pipes. We actually, in conjunction with redoing the heating, we also need to redo the ventilation, which is a lot of the expense of air conditioning. So then the question becomes, within the context of the project, we do need to not just do heating, but we also need to do a whole lot of air, do we put any dehumidification and cooling into that air system and how energy efficient is that system? And the payback of the eight hundred thousand dollars-
Thank you.
From the four point eight million dollar, nine million dollar project down to the four million dollar project in terms of, just the energy cost, it was, Charlie Simmons said was five years.
Actually, it was the engineer who said that?
Carlos said that, that you can pay, you pay back all that extra capital cost in five years and then it's savings beyond that because the, the most expensive system had an operating cost of a dollar twenty-seven per square foot and the, over the less expensive one, which was a dollar forty-seven, dollar forty-eight. So at any rate, it, it, there's two things that are going on and Charlie asked the school committee to, you know, sort of consider in the capital subcommittee to act both in relation to recommendations and determinations about specifically what to do at Driscoll, but ask that we simultaneously create a policy for all of our buildings going forward about what do we want in our buildings and when do we want it in terms of, his recommendation was, you know, that this is a project that's been coming for fifteen years to overhaul the whole system at Driscoll. Other buildings aren't queued up in the timeline, they're not, their systems aren't expired yet. So primarily around what do we do in replacement, but also we need to struggle with this issue about what do we do with the schools right now that are saying they want it right now even though it's not like Driscoll. So there's a bunch that the capital subcommittee has to work on.
Are there any other questions about that or comments? Future agenda items for the capital subcommittee are going to be an updating of the rental of facilities policy with rates, so when we rent out our gyms and things like that, that policy. School capital improvement program, we're going to be working on that, the five-year plan, et cetera, and hopefully some of this will be factored into it along with playgrounds. Those are things that are also on our plate. Not so much to do the playgrounds, but to help Parks and Rec and figure out where we're going to get the money for the playgrounds because it's not in their budget, it's not in our budget, it's got to be somewhere. And playgrounds need to be renovated every twenty years or so, according to Ms. Shook Gallantine. The transportation demand management project is something that I'm really pushing very strongly, there's been neighbors at Lincoln School who have been tolerating a lot and we need to make sure that that school has one along with all the rest of our schools. It's, it's way too late. The transportation department put a moratorium on permits until we have this and that's been an ongoing issue. And then the enrollment and classroom capacity reports, updating of that, so that's, we have a lot on our plate in addition to three projects, the ninth school, the high school and Devotion. I think that's it. Anything else that I left out? Okay.
Scott, curriculum.
Curriculum. The first meeting of the curriculum committee will be Tuesday, the nineteenth, upcoming Tuesday at eight-thirty. We are still looking at what, what our plans for the year are. And I think we're going to start this meeting by having conversations with the two new people in the teaching and learning group that we met tonight and just to see what their thoughts and reactions are. I also, part of what we were going to do is to have Ms. Gittens talk about some of the thinking of the central administration and what they were focusing on. And I think we got to look at that tonight with this presentation. So what I would say is, if you are on the curriculum committee or if you're planning to come to the meeting, it might be interesting to just read through this again and thus make that a part of our conversation. Over the course of the year, one of the big things will be the math program review. And I don't know exactly when that will start, but that will be one thing. There are changes in the bullying program that we may need to talk about. There are always things around the test scores that come in that have to do with the achievement cap. So we will be doing all of those things. We will also be thinking about how we want to find out about the various school improvement plans. We had a different way of doing it last year, we went out to the schools and met with the school councils. That worked fairly well, we need to make up our minds whether we want to continue to do that again. We also had the new principals come in at the end of the year and meet with us in a meeting before school committee. We have to decide if we want to do that again. Would that replace the school improvement plans? Would that be in addition to them? So we are, we will be having some discussions around what is going to happen over the course of the year that we need to, we need to plan the dates for. So that's where we are and I hope you will come.
Thank you. All right, stay tuned. Ms. Charlofsky, government relations?
Yes. So MAS C has released their resolutions for the year. I just got a copy hot off the press from Ms. Coyne who informed me of it this afternoon, I've not had a chance, I skimmed him and most of them seem like no brainers, I shouldn't say that probably, but that's what, you know, the things that we would want to have happen. I think what we'll do is possibly have a government relations subcommittee meeting sometime before the, this may not be possible. Anyways, we, we'll discuss it and I'll let you guys know and everybody's invited to government subcommittee. I think I'm doing that right? Yeah, yeah, thank you. And we can discuss the resolutions and make sure that there are things that we would like to recommend to the full committee to then recommend to our representative, who I think is me, this year to go to MAS C, but if anybody else would like to go, they are more than welcome to go. That's it. The state budget, I think is okay and there's nothing else right now that has happened.
So by way of clarification, our government relations subcommittee, I think we might positively characterize as a committee of the whole.
Correct.
Otherwise, we would call it a committee of one. On the, but we'll call it, we'll positively characterize it as a committee of the whole. On the subject of government relations, I wanted to, us to recall some, what I think of as very good work that we did in February in light of what's happening in our country, the conversations in our country, the laws and the threats to the laws of our country in relation to our communities, the members of our community. And we wrote a letter to our community that I would like to, to read, read back to us and ask the committee to consider essentially redelivering, restating in light of the continuing threats to our communities and in particular, the challenge to the stats of, of the Dreamers of hundreds of thousands of children who are members of our community and to their families. So what we wrote is, I will read to you, "Dear public schools of Brookline community," excuse me, "From time to time, as critical national issues related to education emerge, the Brookline School Committee believes it's important to reiterate our policies and practices, specifically with respect to students in the public schools of Brookline, as well as reinforce our commitment to the PSB's core values. The Brookline School Committee is very proud that students in our schools reflect the fact that Brookline has been a beacon for global families for decades, for new immigrants and refugee families seeking better opportunities for their families, for educators and students at more than twenty Boston-area universities, for medical staff at the Longwood Medical Area and in the biomedical field, for high-tech workers in our thriving IT industry and beyond. As a general principle, the Brookline School Committee reaffirms the PSB's longstanding commitment to providing educational opportunities that ensure that every student, regardless of race, color, religion, gender, sexual orientation, marital status, age, national origin, native language, disability or economic status, meet our standards for achievement, participation and growth. Further, the United States Supreme Court in Pire versus Doe nineteen eighty-two concluded that, quote, "States cannot constitutionally deny students a free public education on account of their immigration status." Specifically in this time of national uncertainty, the Brookline School Committee is well aware that a number of Brookline students and families, faculty and staff are increasingly vulnerable. At this time, it is important to reiterate the fact that the PSB does not require information regarding a student's immigration status, nor do we share personally identifiable information, nor will we in the future. Should PSB staff become aware of a student's immigration status? It is neither our policy nor our practice to share that information with the United States Citizenship and Immigration Services, USCIS, or Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. If families have specific questions related to this issue, please contact Samuel Zimmerman, Deputy Superintendent for Student Services, at Samuel underscore Zimmerman at PSBMA.org. We specifically reaffirm our values of educational equity and respect for human difference and we are committed to an atmosphere of safety in which to acknowledge and express those differences while advancing true acceptance and respect for all. Today, certain nationalities and religions face attack, but we know that any nationality, religion or group may well face attacks tomorrow. Recognizing that we are all in this together, we reaffirm our unwavering support for all PSB students, staff and families and unwavering adherence to policies and practices that uphold these values now and in the future. We acknowledge that this is a frightening and uncertain time for some of our community members and we want to affirm that all students and families are valued, welcome and important members of our inclusive and pluralistic community, respectfully signed, I hope each and every one of us, members of the Brookline School Committee. And our superintendent, who also signed it in February. So I would open that up for discussion and I would hope a motion and a vote.
So I am very supportive of resigning that, restating it and resigning that letter. The one thing that we should look into and my tired brain can't remember the details at this moment, but I do remember getting some feedback that, that people were unsure about the, the language around the sharing, what information we do or don't share. There was something in that, that phrase that, that, I can't remember precisely what it was, but it, but we should just look at that again and, and make sure that that language is, is as clear and exactly what we want it to be.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Dunn can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that version is the corrected version.
Okay.
There was a question, or the question that you might be remembering is, one of the optional forms, stop me anytime, Ms. Dunn, one of the optional forms that we, that may be submitted around financial aid could discuss immigration status, but there are other ways to fill out the financial aid forms that do not, there are other forms you can submit that do not reveal immigration status. And so at any rate, I think that language is the status, that it was an optional form and by the way, it's, and it's not retained anyway. Is that, is that more or less correct?
The documents used in that process don't go anywhere. We actually use them and then make the determination and then we will be actually shredding them because of their sensitivity, whether it's immigration forms, tax forms, there's just too much personal information, so we will be making our determination and then shredding those documents, so we won't actually retain possession of those.
Just check it off that it was received and it was, and then it-
And shredded.
It was reviewed, okay. So I think that is the corrected form. There was another document, I believe, maybe the superintendent sent out about undocumented immigrants, which we might want to look at as well. This one was a more general statement, but I think there was a second one that the superintendent sent out about specific, and that, we might want to look at that one as well because of DACA and whatever may be happening with the, with the Dreamers. But that, I think that's reflective.
So is this an action that we want to take of sending this, sending this out to our community again? Thank you. All right. All in favor? Great, thank you so much.
Just out of curiosity, what does it mean to send it back out to our community? Is it worth saying that we passed this as a resolution last year, what, January or February, whatever, and that we're at February and that we now, now that we have new school committee members, we've kind of reaffirmed it for this year with the school committee and a new set of families who are coming in who may not have been aware that, that was what we had said and we just, I don't know. What does it mean to send this out? Let me ask, let me ask it, let me ask it that way. I don't know what I just said, I'm tired. What?
Really good question. I mean practically like on the boot on the ground, what are we doing?
Jelena, any ideas for us? You have four and a half seconds, you're walking to the microphone to come up with this communication plan.
I'll take these as suggestions, not as, what we did last year was sent as an email to all parents and staff. We also sent it out on Facebook and Twitter and posted on the website. Because it's a reaffirmation, you could also simply put it on the website and social media sort of thing rather than send it to everyone. So those are two options, basically either do the whole thing, which is email, social media, website, or reaffirm it and bring it back up to everyone's attention through the, you know, the internet basically, website and social media. Those are essentially the extent of the options.
About that, yes?
It strikes me that at the very least, we need to send it, send it out to parents who are newly enrolled in the schools because they haven't received it and they're not necessarily going to look on the websites. Either that or send it out again, maybe with a cover note that says, you know, we want everyone to be aware that we still, that we are reaffirming this policy. So I think one or the other, but at the very least, it has to be sent out to the people who have not received it.
As I was thinking about it, we should probably be translating it. Did we last time? Into Spanish and? Okay. Great, thank you.
I think that Susan had a, I think that it can be, as a parent who gets communications from the school at different times, I think it would be a little bit confusing to have it as a letter, as not a freestanding letter that is coming under a new date. I think that it's probably best to say something very much like what Susan has said and that we've discussed this, that we know that there are continuing issues in, in our country right now and that we stand behind our statement and that we thought that it was important and for new families that are coming in and for families who are here, that we think that this is important, we continue to think it's important and this is- that this is important and we continue to think it's important and this is our letter for this year.
So can you just break that down in terms of the action? I mean, because we, I mean, we want to put Suzanne on it and we want to somehow date it, but are you saying?
I think it should be a new letter that's dated September, whatever date, run tomorrow, or whenever this goes out.
Fourteenth, yeah.
September fourteenth, and say, you know, "Dear Public Schools of Brookline Community, we had our first school committee meeting of the year, something that's been discussed that we've discussed in the past, this important issue of how all, you know, we respect all of the families in the community and we wanted to, as we did last year in February of 2017, we want to restate that and then go forward."
So, so do you all want to deputize Ben and Andrew and me to write, to insert just that opening paragraph into this letter and then leave everything else the same?
Yes.
Done. Got it. Okay. Thank you. Good? We're good? Okay. Additional liaison updates? Oh, policy. Anything from policy, Ben?
The only other thing was, if somebody could find the one that I think there was a second one that the superintendent sent out, just send it to the committee and we can decide maybe we want to do the same thing with that one, but it was a separate one.
Mr. Chang.
Policy. We met last Wednesday, I believe, our first meeting, and we kicked off in terms of identifying policies that we will be working on this year as well as completing. Very much appreciating Mr. Zimmerman and Ms. Dunn's guidance on some of the policy that we'll be working on. So let me just overview that. We'll be completing the wellness policy, which has gone through some additional edits as well as feedback. I will talk a little more about that. Also, the meal charge policy, which you, we all may vaguely remember, there was actually a tentative first reading back in October of last year, and obviously, there was quite a bit of consternation around whether or not kids will ever be denied food and that will absolutely not happen, and we heard that very clearly from Ms. Dunn. And in addition, we'll be also working on student activity policy and as well as reviewing the current PSB policy on discipline and attendance and field trips. So the PSB meal charge policy will actually be in the form of a draft administrative directive that will be kind of test-driven this year with the idea that by doing so, you allow the schools and the administrators to be able to kind of test-drive what this policy would look like and how it would work actually on the ground, and using that experience and feedback to fine-tune this policy and bring it back to the subcommittee before we, you know, bring it to the full committee. So I think that's, I think that's a fantastic way to make sure that something that is obviously written and even though it's well thought out, is well tried before it's actually fully implemented. And lastly, I just want to mention the wellness policy, which we've been talking about quite a bit. One of the things that we decided to delay the first reading until probably maybe October timeframe is because we have new school leadership in a number of our schools, including obviously Heath and Pierce, we wanted to give those principals time to be able to review the wellness policy and provide their input before bringing it back to the subcommittee and then finally to the full school committee for first reading.
That's it? Questions? Additional liaisons and updates? Ms. Charlebsky.
So I had the pleasure of going to Bedford this morning to the Edco meeting, and things are actually going quite well at Edco. The building now is fully occupied. They've rented out all the spaces that they have there. It's a rather large building. I think a number of you haven't been there, but, so they have some programs there, they have offices, and they have, the lab collaborative offices are located there, too. The, as I mentioned to you last spring, Winchester informed Edco that they were withdrawing from Edco. In order to do that, we all have to approve that through new articles. Yeah, it's really weird. Through new articles of, and I'm trying to think of the word, incorporation or whatever, that each school committee has to approve it. Along with that, there's another school district that has voiced interest in joining Edco. So rather than bringing it twice, we have to do it by the end of the year, not the end of, not January, December 2017, but rather before next June. Colleen felt that it was a good idea, Colleen Dolan, the executive director, felt it was a good idea to wait and see if this group did want to join this district, then we could do both of them at once. So that's just one part. What is good is that our fee is not increasing because Winchester withdrew. It's staying the same and next year it will go down, and also the budget, the closing out of the budget looks like there may be a minor surplus at Edco, all of which is good news for us. We had a presentation from the head of Ideas, which is, okay, somebody help me, Ideas. It stands for Initiatives for Developing Equity and Achievement for Students. It used to be EMI, it used to be, it's gone through a few iterations of different acronyms, but it's the same program. We, as members of Edco, have free membership, so all of our teachers, all of our staff can participate in it. We do have, there are some fees for some of their programs, but not for others. They are going to be having a big conference with Beverly Tatum, Beverly, Dr. Tatum, thank you, in April, April 7th was the date at Bentley College that I asked who it was geared to, and I said to staff, school committees, superintendents, for everybody. They'll have breakout sessions also at that event and there's, also was quite a bit of participation this summer. I think Brookline actually did a workshop with the Ideas group this summer, the last week in July. So it's been a good aspect to our, our membership. I can pass this around, certainly give it to you, but what's available for the fall in terms of, they have two credit courses on anti-resistive school practices to support the success of all students. They also have a one-hour, one-credit course on building bridges, facilitating courageous conversations with students, and five-hour seminars about, one teaching about Native Americans and other affinity groups challenging microaggressions. So they've been very active, these programs are, some are held in the district schools, some are held out at, at Edco. The, and the head, Karen, oh shoot, just saw her name today, and of course, I can't remember, do we remember her name? Is, came and spoke to us today about all the things that they've been doing and the positive feedback they've had from different districts. The last piece is, and I'm not sure, our professional development day is which day? Is it the seventh? Not the voting day. Okay. Because there, Edco is having a special professional learning day for specialists and related therapists, and the keynote speaker will be Dr. Robert Brooks, and then they're going to have breakout sessions about, it's geared towards all the professionals that don't have affinity groups within the, like occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists. So I will share this with you so that, Dr. Batz, Mr. Batz, so that we can join it if we feel it's appropriate. Any questions?
I had a related question, because your report on Edco, I was recalling that when I joined school committee, I took advantage of one of the advantages of membership, which is new school committee training and orientation.
Right.
And is that, Robin, have you spoken with Julie and Suzanne about, is there a fall? Yes? You've done it.
You did it with them?
Yes.
And it's free there as opposed to paying with some of the-
You just did it or you did it years ago or whatever?
No, no, just two months ago.
Oh, I see.
You and Julie did it, right? Together?
No. So do you want, you haven't been able to, have you talked to Robin about, or about lying about? Okay, fine.
So Newton's having their election in November, so they'll probably run another one after the new election.
I mean, one of the things I thought was interesting was I was, I did it with people from three other, new members from three other school committees, and just the different perspectives was, was very valuable.
And the other piece to remember, Edco runs groups for school committee members, superintendents, assistant superintendents, a number of curriculum coordinators, so that those are interesting groups to go to. I do, does everybody get the dates for the school committee members? I can make-
We get their, sorry, we get their mail. Yeah, we get their, they comes in physically in the mail.
Okay. But there is, Wednesdays once a month and they usually have a speaker, and what I can try and do is make sure that you all get the who's coming up and what the time and date is.
All right. Yes. Scott.
Monday, I went to the first BEF meeting and they are gearing up, there are lots and lots of new members. One of the things they've done that is somewhat different this year is that, as you, well, they're, everyone is organized by school teams, so there are people from Driscoll, there are people from Heath and so forth, but they've never had a high school team. This year, they have several people who are there specifically to promote the BEF at the high school. One of the new people is Abby Cox, so she will be, I think, an excellent member. She's a former, if you don't know, she's a former school committee member. They are planning a busy year. On October 13th, the Metzger Fellows will be speaking at Lincoln School in the evening. March 23rd is the trivia event that will be held at Heath School. Team Brookline is gearing up if you feel like running in the marathon. The BEF is looking for people who would like to do that. So all of those things are underway, and I believe it's this year, and if it's not, it is next year, but you remember the award that Vicky Milstein got? And I can't think of what it was called. The Spurber Award? Sure. But every five years, a new person gets the Spurber Award, and it is for people in administrative leadership positions. So I don't know if, I don't think, we didn't talk about it that much, but I don't know if the actual award is going to be decided this year and then given this year, or whether they'll be deciding it this year and then giving it in the fall. But in any event, that's coming up before too much longer. So if you have people that you think would be good, not that we, they, they will be nominating them, but there are plenty of people to talk to and give your opinions to. So it looks as if they're going to have a very good year.
I would like to encourage people, if you get a chance, to go to the Metzger, what's it called the evening? It's the-
The Metzger Fellows.
The Metzger Fellows. These are staff in our schools who spend time during the summer writing a piece, which they then present at this, about their teaching, about their development as a teacher. It's truly fascinating to hear people talk about how they got to where they are and, and what motivates them. I, I'm not going to be able to go this year, but I think if anybody could. It's usually at the Lincoln School and the auditorium, and it's a Friday night this year, I think, the 13th? Yeah. Yeah, it's Friday because I'm out of town, so I know it is. Okay.
Any other liaison reports? Yes? Yes?
I went to the organization that used to be known as the 21st Century Fund, is now the Brookline High School Innovation Fund. Their board meeting earlier this week, they are gearing up for an exciting, busy year, planning their gala, which is on our calendar, is always a fun community building event at Lucky Strike, I think. And so they're excited about that and excited about the program work that they're, that they're getting underway, so.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, well, we have down here that I was going to report on our workshop, but I think we both are here, we were there, and also, we approved the extensive record to, we voted, so now Robin will post that, and so for the public who want to find out about our, I encourage you to read the, should read the minutes, to read the record because it tells about it, and in fact, the centerpiece of that was really the goals, superintendent's goals and the departmental goals, and we, that's what we talked about tonight. Yes?
Just quickly, because I know we're late and we probably all want to go, but, but related to the goals, we were talking about communications plan for, for the letter. I think it'd be excellent to send out broader communications about the goals, to make that available to our school community.
All right. Okay. Any new or other business to come before this committee? And so I call us adjourned for September 14th.